We'll now call the City Council Budget Work Session to order for August 24th. I now have the invitation and pledge allegiance. I would like to thank the stakeholders, the leaders, the guidance, the decisions we've over this budget, Father. Ask you to give us a little bit of knowledge, Father. Ask you to continue to protect this, today on bar, the state, Father, and this country, Lord, COVID. Ask you to help clear this COVID out in this community, Father. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock? Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Hello?
You have to unmute Stanley, but I got you. Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, we have one item on our agenda. Go over the draft budget. We'll let Dan go ahead and take it away. We're having some technical difficulties, so we won't be able to put the budget screens up, but we all have our worksheets. We can go all go verbally as we have in past years.
I'll try to, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to, uh, remember to guide you through the, uh, through the document with pages. And I will say this was, uh, kind of a, uh, almost a living, breathing document, so it changes, uh, almost before the dries for the next printing. On the first page is just kind of a little cheat sheet. It's a grid of all the departments, um, uh, in the city, and then what funds those departments attached to. So, um, that might help you, uh, as you look through some budget reports along the way. Um, that's the only reason that I included that in there. If everyone remotely hearing?
I'm hearing.
I'm having a hard time hearing. Uh, you all need to speak into your microphones, please.
Yes, me too. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, when we go to page two is, uh, just some, what I call-
That's no better. That's no better.
Okay. What I call global budget assumptions. And these are assumptions that kind of, uh, they're not unique to any specific department, but rather they, they go across all the departments. And, uh, first of all, we're using an incremental budget. You know, my intent is not to read this whole thing, uh, oh, you know, straight through page by page. But what an incremental budget does is it basically looks at your current year budget and then rolls a lot of those numbers forward. And then, uh, um, through our discussion with department managers and staff, um, we either added or subtracted from those budget lineups. And, um, you haven't noticed the new, uh, budget document now has, uh, actual numbers to the budget highlights. And I, I chose to go with that, uh, manner instead of in the, in the past where, where we put, uh, numbers in between the actual budget lineups. This way you could turn to a department and go immediately to the budget highlights and hopefully see some, you know, what, uh, you know, what I'm posing, or at least what I'm featuring in the budget changes for that department. It's not every change is not included, uh, in the highlights, but, uh, what I will call the more, uh, dramatic or drastic changes. Um, staying on these assumptions, I did make a change to the salary increase, uh, comment. Um, it achieves it. I don't think you have this because I, uh, put this in, I believe, just Monday morning. Uh, no, I guess it was Friday afternoon, maybe Mark and I talked a little bit about it. Says salary increases of three percent or increases according to contractual, uh, requirements. And then I have a sub-bullet that says budgeted increase is not council authorization to raise wages across the board, but merely a factor applied to all salaries to allow for step increases in other incidental salary fluctuations. Specific contract increases capitalized must be approved by council.
Um, I have a question. It says salary increases of three percent or increases according to contract for agreements. Okay, are you, are you speaking about? I, I understand we have contract for agreements that we have to pay three percent on, but are you talking to-
Frozen.
He needs to know he got frozen out, otherwise he's still, he's gonna be expecting an answer.
Stanley, you froze up.
Yes or no? I can't hear you.
You froze-
You froze, Stanley.
I, I, I said on the second one where it says salary increases-
Oh. Okay. It's gonna be that kind of night, huh?
Percent on contract for agreements. But are we paying three percent all the way across the board?
We're, no, sir. We're not paying three percent across the board. The three percent is just a quick factor that's applied to salaries, um, to move the budget, I'm gonna say, to move it along. Some contracts might have two and a half percent in them, and, you know, for whatever reason, some may have five percent. This is, uh-
Why, why would we be paying salary people a three percent guarantee?
We're not guaranteeing them that. I just read a comment that I added to the packet that's not in your packet as of yet. And it says that the increase is not council's authorization to wait, to raise wages across the board. It's merely a factor applied to salaries to allow for step increases and other fluctuations in salaries. Specific increases must be approved by council. You don't have that in your packet yet. I had that since this was printed.
But can you repeat that last phrase? You said you have that since this was printed, so is there going to be an increase across the board for the employees?
No, it says, this is the third time now. Budgeted increase is not council authorization to raise wages across the board. It's not authorization. It's merely a factor applied to all salaries to allow for increases in steps and other incidental salary fluctuation. Specific contract increases must be approved by council. It's, it's no guarantee. It's just a factor applied to the wages for things that might come up during the year. Uh, so for example, you wanna do, uh, the, the PTO excess buyout, and someone says, is that in the budget? It's part of this three percent factor that's been applied to salaries across the board.
Well, well, I, I'm certainly not trying to hard time you, but how in the world do I make any kind of a decision on a, on a packet that's not come, say, I don't have it in your package yet? Well, how, how would I know that if I hadn't asked that question? How would I know that?
You wouldn't. And my opening comments said that the packets have changed, uh, slightly even since you've gotten them, because this is a, a living, breathing document, um, that is changing. And that's why we're having these workshops. Um, and as these changes are made, you, I can get you an updated packet for next Monday's meeting. Uh, that was one thing I wanted to ask. And then as we go through it, uh, I'm sure there will be other changes, because, uh, my understanding is that as we go through it, even today, uh, someone on council may say, um, we can't afford this, or we wanna add this, or whatever it is. So I'll make a note, and then I'll add it again, and, and we'll move forward from there.
Thank you for asking. Saying that, I'm listening to your statement, have-
I can't hear.
Have the three percent money been incorporated into this budget anywhere?
It's been incorporated across the board on all salaries.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's where you always wanted that.
It's not a guarantee by council that, and it's not, e- even if you were to approve the budget as it is, it's not going to give everybody raises. As a, as a former auditor, the first thing, one of the first things we do is say, we wanna see all contracts, and we look at everybody, you know, we look at a, a higher range, and then a sample of all union con, you know, union employees, to make sure that there is documentation that supports the salary being, or the wage being paid to any individual we're testing. So, just having this document in and of itself with this comment, and it does not, in my opinion, as an auditor, uh, suggest that the council is agreeing to a three percent raise across the board by adopting this budget whenever that budget is adopted. It's just-
Can I ask, can I ask a question? I mean, I, I don't know how to raise my hand, but can I? Okay, surely, surely by now, you have a list on who is and who isn't gonna get a raise, correct?
Not, no, no, not-
You, 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 you-
Stanley, what did you get with Dan after the meeting?
I don't have, I, I might get a raise that I'm unaware of right now.
I just, I just asked a question. I just asked a question that, that-
And I said no.
That surely you would know now who would be in that three percent category and who wouldn't be.
No, that's not-
Stanley, if it's a union job, then they'll get their raise on their anniversary date?
I, I understand that. I'm not even talking about the union people. I understand they're gonna get a raise, but I'm talking about other employees.
Okay. We're still in the opening line of the budget. We're gonna keep moving. If you have more questions about it, you can get with Dan by another day, and he'd be more than happy to meet with you. All right, continue on. Dan.
Okay.
Garbage, and I'm doing my best to hear the garble best I can, and I may sound the same way.
I'm sorry?
He's having trouble hearing, and he says, kinda garbled.
Okay. All right, um, you're going to notice in a lot of the salary areas that, especially in the personnel, there's a lot of reclassifying of employees. In the past, people would be classified one hundred percent to a department, but the reality is they were being allocated to maybe three or four departments, or two or three funds, or whatever it might be. I'm a perfect example of that. My budget was last year put in the finance department, but I'm actually being charged to city manager fifty percent and the water department fifty percent. So, this budget is allocating salaries to where the system is charging them. So you're going to see a lot of reclassifications throughout the budget, uh, throughout the budget highlights. However, wherever management is asking for a new position, the first budget highlight in a department looking for new people says add. So for example, it will say, add three CMD technicians to the water department budget. And then, uh, or add one, uh, uh, one parks maintenance person to the parks manager. That will always be the first thing you're going to say, see, in the personnel budget, because again, we're trying to be as open and upfront about this budget as possible. Any of the reclassifications that you see are going to be very, uh, very common, but they're not really adding to the budget. They're just basically rearranging the chairs in different departments. Health insurance is being budgeted to increase twelve percent. Um, we were told about ten to twelve. And being, uh, more conservative in nature, I'd like to take the higher number. It's not that I'm trying to fluff the number up or anything like that. Um, I will say about four weeks ago, we don't have a final quote yet, but we were told that number is probably going to be closer to nine percent. So hopefully by the time the final budget, uh, comes about in, uh, late September, that number will be, uh, changed in my, and, uh, basically favorably impacting, uh, the budget. And then, uh, workers' comp, we're using a modification rate of a hundred fifty percent. And if you don't know how workers' comp goes, anything over one hundred percent is bad for the client, for the city. This is still, uh, a, a factor being applied in part to this accident. I guess we had, uh, Okeechobee landfill three years ago. Uh, my understanding is this is the last year that, um, that, that accident will be applied to the modification rate. So hopefully, um, that will come down a little bit. I, I will say, in my experience, uh, I think one hundred fifty percent is probably the highest I've ever seen, uh, in any budget, uh, I've worked with. Uh, probably one twenty is about the highest before that. And then the last one, I, uh, uniforms and boots. I wanna say that, uh, we are budgeting full replacement of uniforms and boots, but contractually we're only, um, we only buy new sets for new employees, and existing employees to get a replacement would have to turn in their current, uh, used and worn uniforms. So, we don't, uh, we're, I'm coming out right up front saying that, uh, the uniform and boot, um, budgets are probably overstated a little bit. By how much depends on, uh, how many returns we get during the year. And then the last piece is, uh, the grants. Except in a couple places, um, grants are assumed not to be, uh, uh, in the budget, because we didn't wanna, uh, blow up, uh, or inflate the expenditure numbers with, you know, we're applying for a grant, so maybe we're gonna get that grant and then find out it doesn't happen. It's easier, in my opinion, to, uh, uh, come back to council, to amend the budget once we know what the grant is and how much it will be for, so. Okay? Now we'll go to, uh, the re, uh, we'll be, page four is the center summary. I'm sorry, yes, page four. And this is just the totals of the proposed budget and, uh, the current year budget, and then, uh, the actuals for the last four years. These same totals show up on each individual department's, um, budget. So for example, when we get to council, you'll see the sixty-nine thousand nine oh four i- is the total proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. And, and it kinda goes right down the line. So this is just a quick summary of all the, uh, of all the different departments. I'm going to go, uh, now to the revenue section, and that starts on page seven. And Brenda, uh, bless you, Brenda, came up, uh, and discovered a, a couple, uh, addition errors that, um, right there in, uh, the first line, the ninety-one, four, eleven. If you, um, just above that footnote one, that's actually ninety thousand four eleven. It was a, uh, I'm gonna just say it was a, you know, calculation error in my converting last year's spreadsheet into this one. Um, I thought I got them all, but that was one of them. And then right below that, the four ninety-eight, that also is incorrect. Is that incorrect, Brenda?
Yes.
That was, yes. Okay. So that one also has been corrected since you got this report, and so it will be re-corrected, um, and then, uh, updated. As you go through, you'll see several, uh, footnotes there. I wanna run down to page eleven. And so you can see, 'cause this question was asked, uh, by a couple council members who met with me. Um, are we, um, accounting for the fact that COVID may reduce some of our tax revenue? And so, as you can see, for example, in the footnote one, um, we are decreasing, uh, twelve and a half percent, which is about a quarter's worth of collections. Not one hun- we're not reducing it totally, but we are reducing it based on what we've seen in, uh, the last quarter of this year. So, we, we've kinda scaled it back a little bit, which accounts then for a little bit of a reduction in the local, uh, option gas tax, fifty thousand dollars, for example, um, which is a twelve and a half percent, uh, decrease in that budget. There are a couple other places where, um, we increased some of those even with the COVID impact, because they were under budgeted for several years. Uh, so for example, um, footnote number six, um, there is an economic impact, but, um, the fuels, fuel tax revenue was exceeding budget for the last three or four years. And so we increased the budget on the one side because it was under budgeted, and then we rolled it back a little bit for COVID. And, uh, so the, the actual impact then is a seven thousand dollar increase. So, um, as we go through those, you know, revenue pieces, um, there are several notes there. Um, and at this point in time, I guess I'll ask if there are any questions on the general fund revenue, which is, uh, basically pages seven through eleven.
Dan, I just had one comment, uh, and I brought this up when we met, as you can so good, about the decrease in sales tax revenue. The figures as of April, they were down almost twenty-five percent. And I'm sure they're gonna be down, in my opinion, probably a lot more than that. So, I think that your decreasing ten percent is very conservative, and that does concern me, that if it is thirty, thirty-five percent down, then it could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars down in revenue. So that's just something that, uh, I discussed with you when we met, and, uh, like I said, the last, uh, quarter I got from, uh, Oral League of Cities was end of April, it was down to twenty-five percent.
Okay, and I'm hoping that by October one, things will be, uh, bumping back up and even going, uh, in through that first quarter, uh, through the end of December. So, uh, again, we will, we'll be monitoring that, and we have the capability, because this isn't a set budget yet, of, uh, increasing that number a little bit, um, or leaving it as it is. But, uh, you know, at the moment, uh, we're looking at about a thirty-five thousand dollar decrease, and, uh, I'm just trying to see, that's on, that's about ten percent. On three fifty.
Dan, I have a question when you're set with that on page ten. Um, account number ending three six nine ninety zero zero. It's miscellaneous, uh, under the miscellaneous revenues. And, um, I'm looking at two thousand sixteen seventeen, it was thirty thousand, then it was fifty-seven in seventeen eighteen, and now we have it budgeted for five thousand. What are those miscellaneous revenues? That's a huge drop.
Which, um, ninety nine?
Page ten.
Yeah.
Everything's-
The one that I was, is, is, the budget now, Maria, is seven thousand five hundred?
Correct.
That's the same one I asked you about, Dan. Is that my topic of Danny, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I come because I wanna see faces, so I'm trying to get to know faces with names.
And I was hoping to have, if, um, well, I need to, if I can, uh, bring it up there. Um, these are just miscellaneous fees. I don't know what the fifty-seven, why that was so high, uh, a couple years, uh, in eighteen. I can definitely find out what that is and, uh, and get back to you, but, uh, Brenda did ask about that, and it's, uh, you know, um, sometimes there's a, a, a charge for whatever some, uh, someone, there was, I think I said there was a mistake. It looked like a mistake. Um, we overpaid someone, and so they refunded the money and they put it in there, where they should've put it up, uh, against the expense account that it came out of. I think there were some small copy fees in there, um, over the, I would, I increased it to seventy-five hundred dollars though, because it was doing, I know, looking at the history, it was performing better than five thousand. Um, I can tell you that. And you can see that from, you know, the last three, four years. It was twelve thousand in eight, in nineteen, fifty-seven thousand in eighteen, thirty thousand and eighteen thousand. So, there, there was no, I saw no point in leaving it at five thousand. I, I bumped it up to seventy-five hundred.
I think the other one for the insurance, I think, was that?
Yeah, those are on a separate line, actually.
Oh, you can hold.
So you'll get back with us on that specific, right? To tell us what that miscellaneous means?
See, I do have my software up, so I might be able to get that to you right now. So, in July of seventeen, we had quite a big, uh, quite a big amount that was paid. It says, we record forfeitures is the description received during current year. I don't, sometimes these notes are kind of vague for me. That was a, a big twenty-one thousand dollars of that money was a forfeiture that we recovered. Does that ring a bell to anybody? We had two fifteen thousand dollar payments, uh, that says easement railroad avenue, miscellaneous receivables. And, uh-
Oh, wasn't that the sale of the easements for those big, huge power poles?
Property and easement, right. So that's part of the reason that fifty-seven thousand dollars, um, is in there. There were two easements, actually.
Yeah.
Wasn't the Duke project, wasn't it Duke?
Exactly, it's a project. Those are the dedicated power lines for New Core.
Then we go back to the, the year before with the thirty thousand dollars, and, uh, I'm just gonna see if I can find a couple things here that might trigger a memory. It says, record new forfeiture, uh, on nine thirty. That, that sounds almost like a receivable as much as anything. And I don't know if I'm getting into too much detail or not, uh, there was a correcting, uh, correction of a two thousand seventeen FRS payment, which, um, apparently it came back to us and it was recorded as a revenue. February, we had a big, uh, fourteen thousand dollar payment in two thousand seventeen. And that would've been, let me see if I got something here that might. It was fourteen and a half thousand dollars, and it says, case number G C fourteen dash two ninety-two, Amont Park. I don't know what G N G B means. That's what I got, and it was put in the miscellaneous review.
Okay. Well, it's not gonna tell us the future anymore.
Nope. Nope. But, and, and I did see that, uh, you know, I kinda looked at s- some of those, and, uh, I could see we were performing better than five thousand, but, uh, probably not that average, not the twenty-five or thirty or whatever that number might be, so.
So you think seventy thousand five hundred?
So I just put twenty-five hundred in, because we were easily, for the last four or five years, going over five. And so I just, uh, again, to be conservative, hopefully it'll be fifteen, but, you know, I think it should be better than that, seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
Any other questions on the general fund revenue? For the moment? All right. Page twelve is infrastructure, and, uh, after this Brenda called, I did all these calculations, and the very bottom number there, the one point three eight six number, should be one point one two eight six. And that hundred thousand dollars up above there, um, was not, did not add, uh, oh, no, it did add in. I think it added in twice is what happened. There's one note on that one, and, uh, we'll see that also in the infrastructure expense account. This is one of the few places where we actually, uh, have a grant that we're including in the budget, in the revenue side. And you may recall the Hardening Grant, um, I, I do have a note in the CIP. I think it was about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars was the request for, uh, fire, uh, station improvements, and that included, uh, you know, extending the bunk room, the kitchens, uh, um, you know, the, the, the roof and the walls, and, um, and the, uh, windows, the storm windows that come down, uh, you know, if it's a hurricane, and, and some other improvements, I think, uh, the floors, uh, the ceilings, and things like that.
And Dan, is that all gonna be reflected in the CIP?
It will be in CIP, but in the budget, um, at the moment, we put in a hundred thousand dollars, because at a minimum, we expect to get, uh, at least the roof and the walls fixed. Um, hopefully we'll get the overhead doors as well and a couple other things. But if the grant exceeds the hundred thousand that's budgeted, then at that point in time, we'll just come back to council and ask them to amend the budget for, for that extra amount. But, uh, I, I didn't wanna put out a hundred fifty, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars out there, um, and then be disappointed, but I, I think at a minimum, we'll be, we'll at least get the hundred- But I think at a minimum, we'll, we'll at least get the 100,000 for the, for the roof and the walls, the exterior walls. Um, this one is kind of a reimbursed as you spend grant. So we're working on some, getting some information right now from Corbett on that. And so whatever the number is on the revenue side is the exact same number on the expenditure side. So we're just putting in $50,000 again on, on this particular grant. It's a reimbursable grant, so if it goes beyond that, we'll just come back for an amendment at that time. As I understand it, it's every five years, I think, we can re, reapply for a grant. And, and there is a small match as, again, from what I understand from local, from local governmental units. So we, we went from the 800 to the 50 because that 800,000 is somewhat of a pool that allows us to draw on now for the next couple of years. And Maria, you might have more background on, on this grant than me, but that's how I understood it from some of the people I talked to in putting this together.
Yeah, that's fine. I do have a question though, at the last council meeting, we approved a Flora River Water Grant that's going to require a 50/50 match. Or at least 50% on our end, at least that's how I read the application. I didn't see anywhere where it said it was going to be forgiven. So that one isn't on here as government revenue, but we are going to have to budget for half of that, I, I, you know.
Well, yes.
I guess we'll get. I guess we'll get to the expense side when we get there, but would that have been it on the intragovernmental revenue state grant side as revenue?
I, I think, as I understood it, that was a loan we were agreeing to and we would get.
It's a loan, yes, but it's a 50/50 match. The loan is the portion that we're supposed to be getting loaned on, and it's a 50/50 grant. I mean, if you read the, the section in there, 50% of that is forgivable, which is the grant. And then the other half is ours that we have to put out. So, oh, I read it. I kept on hearing that it was forgivable, but I didn't read anywhere in that contract where it said it was going to be forgivable. If they said something, that's great, but it should be in writing. Maybe I didn't read the whole thing, I'm just putting that out there. But I just would hope that that is more thoroughly vetted and to make sure that we don't come short, that amount of money if we're going to end up accepting that grant.
Yeah, there, there was a small portion where it shows the amount of loan, $250,000 forgivable part 125 repayment amount. And then it says that may be repaid, but that's a good point because if that loan, or if, or when that loan is forgiven, that the first half of it, that would be revenue to us as, at that point, as a grant. I've got a note on that one.
But what you're saying in terms of all the rest of the grant, if we apply for any FERDA grants from the county or anything like that, we're just going to put that in there as we go, rather than assuming that there's, that it's a done deal, obviously, but then that means at the CIP, it won't have that language in there. So I mean, how are you going to reconcile not having something in the CIP, catch the budget, but then we go out and apply for funding, hopefully? I mean, that's no big deal, it's just a pass through, I guess, but we still have to do it on a reimbursement basis. But I don't know that the county is going to keep 100% funding for those, for those grants anymore. They may change it to where we have to put in a percentage like we have in the past. And there's nothing like that in here right now, so it eliminates the possibility of us applying for those FERDA grants through the county. I know that Danielle sits on that board, my husband, he was appointed by council several years ago. That's the recreation funding and that's the money that the city uses for rehabbing of our, of our facilities. And you know, without that there, I don't see anything else in the budget where it shows that we're going to be rehabbing anything from our own revenues.
Well, okay, well, this is a one-year budget, the CIP goes forward five. And so we are, and that CIP will actually become the backend of this budget document. I ask, everything in one, I'm going to call it a binder, I don't know how it would be put together. But we struggled a little bit trying to find all the different pieces this year, this spring, as we were trying to get some of this together. But in, in the CIP, and actually, again, I wish I had capability to put some of that up on the, on the screen. But I do, I do have, for example, in the recreation budget, let me just find it here, maybe I, maybe I'm just getting too far ahead here, but.
Oh, we can wait till we get there, I don't want to jump that, we can wait till we get there if it's, that's okay.
The CIP, you don't even have that, but so for example, there's $100,000 budgeted for Donaldson Park Restrooms.
But that's under general fund revenues.
Right, and part of that is, part of that funding is anticipated to come from the county. And then the match part would come from the infrastructure fund, $25,000. So 75, and again, that's assuming a 25% match on the grant, based on a couple of other grants I saw. That seems to be about the norm, about a 75, 25 split. So that's why I budgeted that. Next year in 21, 22, there's money in the CIP for Durham Martin Park in, I believe, irrigation and, and some improvements there. As well as Lake Tulane Park, that may have been actually pushed back a year.
What are the funding sources for those, for those improvements though on your CIP? What are the funding sources?
The funding sources?
Yeah, for those projects.
Oh, I've got state grants and then also infrastructure grants. For example, for the first year and then the second year, I have state grants at the moment as a funding source. 24, 25, those are blank right now. There was some amphitheater money out there or some, or some talk about it. Didn't seem like anybody was.
The on the grass?
What that was. I think Danielle finally mentioned that it was.
That truck on the grass?
I'm sorry?
The big truck. Wait.
No, it's the only thing that's going to be.
All right.
I believe it was something that was going to be at Donaldson Park at one time. They talked about the concrete pad right about in the middle, the margin, they would have some type of regular hurricane during certain times, they put a stage up. I brought it up a while ago.
Yeah, but that, it was, I thought what he did, what Julian did was that, that took care of that, to revamp it of Donaldson Park.
But I can't quite hear, could you speak up just a little bit? We've got too many things in between us.
Okay. I said, I thought that the, when Julian, when, when, when we revamped Donaldson Park, I thought that's what that, we did that then, there was nothing else to be, we, we modeled at Donaldson Park. Because we, we didn't put the stage there, but we put the staging area there. Because remember before, there was, there was no place to plug in anything and we, we, we redid all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
All right.
Sorry.
Thank you, that's all right, I tried to yell too. Go ahead. Okay, so the three CRAs, basically I'm just here, I'm just rolling those same revenue numbers over. In, in speaking with the advisory committee, I think they were hoping to, I'm going to say, secure an audience at the workshop next Monday. And by that, I mean, maybe have some time carved out for maybe some of their ideas on the budget side of that. We did discuss the financial position of the CRAs. And it looks like, and I'm not exactly sure what the ultimate resolution will be with the brick building. But with that out, if that reverts back to the general fund, that will put the Main Street CRA in a positive equity position. They are improving every year, so. And, and, but that brick building was really a draw on, on their funding a little bit, so.
Dan, this is the second under contributions. The first one, we have a Rotary Christmas tree donation. At the last meeting, we talked about having a line item where we could add some more Christmas decorations for this year. I don't know, I guess, that's the place you want to put it. Page 14, midway.
Dan, can you speak into your microphone, please?
Me?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said, at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we were looking to have a line item for Christmas tree decorations again this year. And that's not exactly the place we want to put it, but I think we should have it someplace that we discussed last week. In the budget.
The, this is the revenue side, so if Rotary's contributing to the city's.
Not what we talked about last week, that's all I'm saying.
And, and I, I was trying to, to make that comment, I couldn't get in, I guess I was, that because we were talking about where that money is budgeted from, where, where the decorations are coming out of, and that comes out of the CRA monies. So it's a CRA expense as opposed to general fund expense or, you know, any of the other funds.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Dan, when the CRA met the other day, did they set money aside for that in their budget conversation?
We didn't, we didn't get that far at that meeting. And we told them that we weren't expecting, you know, decisions at, at the point. They're still trying to work their way through some of this and I guess, I don't know, Kim, if you want to add anything to that?
I don't have anything to add to that.
I think some of what they did talk about was, you know, we, we've got these grants out there and they've been published for some time and, and, you know, we're just, one, we're either not getting any or people don't, you know, they're not realizing it or whatever it may be. But I, I think they're hoping to be able to maybe re, reallocate the budget and where those funds might be used, so.
You're talking facade grants?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think probably as far as the facade was for the South Side is concerned, I think that, that was a match that they had to pay. And the people just did not have the funds to do that. And that, I think that's what the holdup of them applying for, for, for so many grants. The residents I'm speaking with, not the business.
Well, again, talking about CRA revenues, anything for revenues on Main Street Funds. Seeing none, South Side Revenue Fund.
Well, I was, I was, I was just going to skip through all the, I was ready to go to the water fund at page 17 because those are just all, they're just rolling over. They are concerned, I will say the advisory board is, is very concerned about having to return money back to the taxing agencies. I, primarily the, the county and the schools, because it's one of those, you know, you have to use it or you, you risk losing it. And so they want to do something with it rather than send it back. But they want to do also something productive with it.
I'm not concerned about the county taking it back. They did it to us, they would have to do it to Sebring and I just don't see it happening. I know that that's kind of like a, a fee thing for them, but as long as they allocate it or plan to use it for something and they just, you know, tab it for something, then they're good to go. But I am not at all concerned with the county coming in and knocking on the door and saying, give us our money back, I, I'm just not. That would have been tax revenue for us anyway, so it's like the money would come back to us one way or the other, but I'm, I'm not concerned. And I don't think that they should be working under the premise of fear. I, I just don't want them to feel that way and pressured into spending that money.
Sure, and I'm, I'm nodding my head, I know I'm not online, but I am nodding my head. And we did also ask LaRue to, I'm going to call it kind of a, a soft opinion on our capabilities of rolling that money over for a larger project that the board and the advisory board could maybe agree to put into, you know, to put toward.
We've done that report with the South Side Funds, we've rolled it over and used a larger amount. I think it was for a match for one of the projects that was on the South Side.
Okay, so starting on page 17 then through 19 is the water system, the water fund. And there's a couple of things on here. This footnote one is another grant that we put in $800,000 for a generator. And we're hoping that'll be grant funded and if not, then, you know, we won't receive that money nor will we incur that expenditure that I'm aware of, at least at the moment. But, so that is one of those, there's only about two or three of these grants that are actually included in the budget, so. Footnote two and three, those are increases that we're anticipating due to the Nucor usage. I think we did some preliminary analysis with the utilities billing and based on them, on their full usage, that number should be about $370,000 to $380,000. Now, we're budgeting 330,000 between water and steward, only because I don't think they'll be at full capacity on October 1. I know they won't be, but, so we brought that back a little bit here in the first year. Another footnote three also includes $72,000. Again, one of those accounts that it was budgeted at a certain level and for the last three, four, five years, we've exceeded that budget easily. So we put in the 72,000, you know, we may have exceeded that budget by 90,000 and to be conservative, I, I used maybe 75% of that number, whatever it was, to, to estimate probably about $72,000 more growth. And some of that is just through expansion as well. One of the things I missed earlier, but you'll see it right here. Footnote four, in the water fund. If this budget were 100% accurate as it is right now, we would be drawing $1.8 million on their reserves. And you'll, on the revenue notes, you'll always see that draw, the footnote will be the last footnote in the budget highlights. So the last numbered footnote, I should say. So for example, in, in the water fund, we're anticipating almost a $1.8 million draw on reserves, again, as the budget is currently. That's a $200,000 increase over the current year, which if that budget came out, and, and I can tell you right now, it will not be as deep as $1.6 million. But that's where the budget takes us in the water fund. In the general fund, I'm going to just ask you to go back to page. I guess it's page 10, and then the note is on page 11. We're looking at a draw of about $750,000 on the general fund, which is less than the current year budget. And this is also working on the assumption of the .3 mils, which I meant to bring up earlier in the presentation. And, and not the 2 mils that is currently on the, what is it, the DR420, I believe it is, so.
Can you repeat, can you repeat though, those last, that last paragraph you just said on the mils? That this budget is based on a 3 mil increase, did I hear that?
Yes, this budget is based on .3 mils currently and not the 2 mils that we preliminary.
You mean the .03 mils?
Yes, correct, 0.3 mils.
Okay, I thought we had a higher tax all of a sudden, okay.
Part of the reason is that the water fund is transferring some of money that, to, to the general fund projected for 2021 beyond their normal contribution back to the fund, so. So that, I wanted to bring that out again, because I don't want council to, you know, not realize that, you know, we're drawing on this fund X amount of dollars. Again, and that's based on this first workshop. And again, I'm sure that things get adjusted during this process, at which point in time then we'll move forward. And we'll also say, because I wholly expected to see the General Fund reserves decline over the last three or four years, and in fact, they were increasing until this 2019, when they decreased about a hundred ninety thousand dollars. And the reason was because of the mileage was so low. And I immediately called Julie, our auditor at Clifton Larson, and I asked her, there's something, something doesn't seem right about this, and she said, no, that was correct. A lot of times, there would be, you know, things budgeted in there, anticipating grants, and maybe the expenditure side was budgeted but not the revenue side, or maybe there were projects budgeted that never took place. And so we actually saw a little bit of an increase over the last four years, again, before 2019, which is projecting about a hundred ninety to two hundred thousand dollars draw on the reserves. So again, I guess you'd be, I call it a conservative budget, some people will say that it's fluff, whatever it might be. But I'm being straightforward and upfront about the whole thing, and I think that's kind of the way Mark wants to play it as well, without putting words into his mouth, but that, those are a couple more comments on some of the revenues.
I have one question for Mark, while we're on the Nucor topic. Are we online available to give service to them on October first, as a plan?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear your comment, Jim.
I asked Mark if we are on the line available to service Nucor by the opening day of October fourth of the city year, it was up to date. He said they were.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got opening day football on my mind, but I'm sorry. Beyond, beside the budget, so, all right, airport revenue. This is page twenty-one. I will say, in terms of the airport, you'll see a large decrease in the revenue, and that was that runway grant of one-point-seven million, and then the Department of Transportation match of ten percent of that. So right off the bat, that revenue is decreasing almost one-point-nine million dollars. Hang on just a minute.
We don't have a project scheduled for this school year? I thought they had projects every year.
They do, but again, we don't, it's being included in the CIP, but we're not putting it in the budget till we know more specifically what that dollar amount will be, and how much it'll be, and things like that.
And to add to that, we don't know exactly what it is. We met with them in a Zoom meeting a week and a half ago, maybe, UI Danielle and the engineers and the other stakeholders. So we don't know for sure what it's, what it's gonna be yet.
One thing about the Airport Fund in general is they are running what the examiner, the auditors are calling a cash flow profit, which means if you look at our, the revenue coming in, minus the expenses, the, you know, the current year expenses, they are running a little bit in the, in the black. And it says right there, that last note, the last bullet of page twenty-one, about sixty-four hundred dollars. Where the airport runs in a deficit is because all their assets are tied into infrastructure, buildings, equipment, things like that. So you factor in three to four hundred thousand dollars in depreciation any given year, and that's going to give you then that paper loss that continues to, I'll say, carve out there, you know, any reserves and any opportunity they might have to build that up, at least at the moment. And then the last budget in the revenue side is the Solid Waste Fund, that's page twenty-two and twenty-three. And again, you could see, if you look at, on page twenty-three, right there, that very last line, the fund balance reserves, we're basically, we're putting in four-hundred-twenty-six thousand dollars to make that budget whole, which means we're dipping into their reserves by about four-hundred thousand dollars more than the current year's budget for this fiscal year. So, and that's, part of that is, or a large part of that is for a garbage truck that's in the budget, as we get to the expenditure side, and then also increasing landfill payments, and the ask for a sanitation supervisor that we'll also see later in the budget presentation on the expenditure side, so.
I have a question now for Robert, if you might, about this new garbage truck. How many garbage trucks does the city actually own right now?
Garbage trucks that we have are, we have eight garbage trucks. One is unusable, one is just left in the trash. It's, it's, it's a, just a junk truck we have parked out there, needs to go to the auction. So that gives us seven trucks that we can actually use. Some of our trucks are getting really old, they do need to be replaced, because they're having a lot of breakdowns. So this truck would be one of the front loaders, the oldest one that we have, it needs to go, because it has a lot of issues.
So is it safe to say that two or three of them are there basically for emergency situation or spare parts?
No, the trucks that we have, they're extra or backup trucks. If one of the primary trucks breaks down, we have a backup truck that the guys can go and use. But we, like I said, we do have one rear loader that's really, really old, and it's just sitting there, it doesn't get used, it doesn't work properly. That one needs to go, it needs to go to the auto.
How many do we run a day differently?
We run three trucks a day, two rear loading, one front loading.
All right, thank you.
One of the things I got putting up there on the increase, I'm thinking, oh, that might be in the Water Department, on increasing the dumping fees, because our fees are going up, we have to increase our revenues accordingly.
Are you saying our dumpster, or we're talking about dumping the garbage at the county landfill is going up?
Robert?
I mean, you're talking about raising, you're raising, to raise the residents and businesses fees, you're saying that we need to raise that because our fees are going up at the, at the, what's it called, the landfill?
Maria, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's, it's not there, it's a wastewater plant, so we went from forty dollars a ton to sixty dollars a ton. I'm working right now to try to find someone to take that product off our hands for a lower price.
So was the forty dollars when we used to haul it down to Okeechobee?
No, ma'am, it's the Republic.
Okay, so how, then in effect at forty?
It's been in effects before I was here.
We don't have a contract with them, do we?
No, ma'am, we sure don't.
And do you know what the county, who are they using? I mean, can we piggyback off of anyone else, or do they also pay sixty dollars?
The county doesn't.
I mean, they have to charge themselves.
Well, this is, this is, this is cake from wastewater, the county doesn't.
Okay, okay.
I got my wastewater, my sanitation mixed up, Maria, I apologize.
Okay, so we're talking cake, not garbage now?
Yes, it's been cake.
We have to increase the fees for the people coming in and dumping.
So you're saying the septic have to go up, right? Okay, and I mean, you all were going to be doing some kind of an assessment on that? Because we're losing money, because we're charging less than what we're having to put out? So why don't we just shut it down and not take any, any more septicage for now? I mean, or why would we keep, we're not?
No, 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 we're not losing.
I thought that was mentioned a couple of months ago, that we were losing money in there, that our fees were going up or had gone up, and we were collecting less than what we were spending. So that's not the case?
If correctly, it was, it was six-hundred and something thousand, and we paid out to have things hauled off around one-forty. I'm just going off the top of my head, so don't quote me on this. So that tells me that we're ahead of what we're paying. So there is, there is income coming in. We need to make an adjustment either for the guys bringing the product in to pay more per gallon. Right now, I'm working with the company, Recycle USA. They're looking at taking our product and possibly taking our brush from our landfill, and maybe doing a washout where we may not even have to pay. I don't know yet, it's still in the works, so that is something I'm working on currently.
So right now, you think we have a four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar profit? Well, that's just the actual stuff, counting all the expenses it takes to do that.
Right, I have to get, look into it more, I'm trying to work on that in several things at the same time, so I am working on it currently.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on sanitation or work on?
So I just, just what he, we're just talking about in terms of the cake, what line item is that then, in terms of revenue?
The septic?
Yeah. Wrong page?
Okay, so page seventeen, it's the very bottom, the very, very last line, right there, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that's a conservative estimate, you can see for the last three or four years, we've kind of exceeded that number, but, you know, I don't want to go all the way to the edge either. But we will review those in, we also have our supervisor starts next Monday, I guess. So director, I'm sorry, so he'll get, again, that's, he'll get more involved in, you know, a lot of this too, as we evolve. All right, so page twenty-five is the first page of expenditures, this is the City Council Department, and you see that sixty-nine-nine-oh-four, right, the total? That's the same total that you see in that Department detail that was on page four way back when, just that quick summary. And so you'll see that Department over the department. The main thing here in this budget is that the health insurance from this year's budget is being basically pushed up as a salary in the next year's budget, because the council opted to take that in lieu of health insurance. And so that's where you're seeing most of that, that increase. Also, as you may recall, that health insurance is budgeted to go up twelve percent, it may not be quite that high. And so when you, you know, when you look at personnel costs adjusted, or a couple of changes that happened mid-year this year, that increase in that total budget is only about seven percent. City manager's budget is page twenty-six and twenty-seven. And so as you can see, that first note on page twenty-seven, it says add. And so we're trying, we're trying to be upfront again about not trying to bury adding a position somewhere in the middle of this packet where all of a sudden, you know, council doesn't remember approving something, or someone doesn't remember being talked about, I guess. We're trying, we're asking to add one IT specialist, an FTE, to replace the cost of contracted server, servicer. And then you see that's made salary costs of fifty-five thousand dollars and benefits of about sixteen and a half thousand. But I will say, this budget also does not include the offset or the savings that would be incurred if we hired this person in here. So this is another place where there's a double dip, I'll call it a double dip, on salary plus the expenses. And one of the reasons we've done this, or one of the reasons we're going this way is because it's very difficult to look at the billing that we're getting, because it's not broken out in terms of arts and labors and equipment and some of that. And some of it is also, I'm going to call it routine, for lack of a better term. So I would, I still hazard a guess that we're going to save some, a pretty good amount of money, I think, by, by bringing IT in-house.
That would be assuming that the IT person doesn't do anything but IT.
That's correct. Oh, you mean the new person, you mean?
Right.
Yes.
Obviously, we're looking for some way you like that person in the area.
Correct, well, and in the Sebring, you know, the person we're contracting right now, he does, I don't, David, he does the phones, he does a little bit with our website, you know, some of, I don't know what else, some of the purchasing of the equipment. He actually builds the equipment as opposed to, you know, buying equipment, so I think Kyle knows quite a bit in a few different areas, I guess, kind of tech-related, but not specifically just computers and servers and hard drive and things like that. The other add in this budget is, I discovered this in one other area, it's not really an add, but what I try, what I'm trying to do is basically crosswalk the nineteen-twenty personnel costs into twenty-twenty. Decide all those classifications. And so in last year's budget, we had three people in the city manager's budget, and I'm just going to call them A, B, and C. And one of those persons, I think it was the city clerk, was, or one of those positions, I think it was this Manny, I don't remember his last name, but there were.
Clerk as well.
And one person was pulled out of that budget, make two. However, the person that was pulled out was not one of the original three. So I effectively had to add this person back, and that probably isn't going to make, I don't know, doesn't make sense. I can only tell you that it's like trying to get a cup of water out of an empty lake. You're saying there's a lake there, there's no water, but I'm going to take a cup of water. I've got a, basically, it's a negative personnel adjustment, because we had three people in there, but a fourth person was pulled out of that budget, and those original three stayed in the budget. So basically, we did not have an HR manager budgeted at the beginning of last year. So David, thank you for being here anyway, even though you're not in the budget, or you weren't in the original budget, I'm sorry.
Don't you think it's because, I think it wasn't because the HR manager was slash also city clerk? I have a question for you, Dan. You had sent me, and I don't know if the rest of the council got it, the listing of all of the positions with all of their pay rates and stuff, and with the adjustments here, it's kind of hard to read in between the lines, but you had an administrative services position upstairs as well as an administrative executive assistant. And from what I gather, talking to you, the administrative services position, which is currently part-time, is budgeted on that list that you gave me as full-time. So in the, in the budget that you provided us, is that position full-time in this budget?
That position, yes, it is full-time in this budget. It's, and it was also budgeted full-time for this current year.
But that person currently is part-time?
Is part-time, correct.
So we're increasing two more, we're increasing, okay, so you're going to have two people upstairs answering the phones and doing the administrative work? Am I, is that correct?
It's not real, we're not adding that position because it was already in the budget. Um, whether that budget, whether the person's actually working full-time. Is, that's a, a different question, I guess, uh, from the budget itself.
Uh, can I add to that? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, wh- when I came here, they told me that was a part-time position and I believe that's what it was. I got Dan here looking and it. Just a couple of months ago, or a month ago, he, I saw where, hey, this says the full-time position, but I have not made that person a full-time. And at this point, I really don't anticipate it on, the budget can change from full-time to part-time.
You mean it could change from part-time to full-time if they're currently part-time?
No.
It can be budgeted down.
They can be.
Oh, you mean budgeted down, okay.
Right, I don't see a reason at this point to have another full-time person up there, part-time, helping us out greatly. And, and again, this is just, we found some surprises in the budget to no one's fault. Um, we had a finance director who was part-time. I don't, this guy has to work overtime to do it, but no, I. That can be, uh, taken out as full-time and, and made what it's, we all thought it was, was a, a part-time, so.
I think we should do that. Got to know. Even right. Um, the other, uh, big piece in, I'm going to say the, uh, in the city manager budget is, uh, that, uh, we're increasing, uh. The operating supplies by, for the purchase of a la- uh, is it operators? Yeah, we put it in there for right now. For a laser fish storage system. We currently have one, but, um. It's outdated and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that contract is never, uh, I don't want to say it hasn't been renewed, but it hasn't been updated. And we want to bring that back up to date, as I understand that that's the only, um, acceptable electronic storage, uh, that. Um, that the state of Florida will accept and, uh, we, we are trying to bring. Some of that, uh, forward as well as opposed to, uh, having a basement full of paper. For storage, so.
No, it's, it's not the only one that, that he just get, uh, confused. It's not the only one the state of Florida recognizes. I mean, sheriff's office has a different one, but. If anybody's interested to know more, David's up on it more than anybody on the, the laser fish, but. Appears they've had it for years, a contract that ran.
I lost that, whoever was speaking.
So, trying not to get too close to Dan, but put my mask on. I said, David has dealt more with this. He, if, if you're interested in to know more about that or why we're asking for money in there, this is something that. Here's a city has had and it's just sat there and hasn't been used and, um, with that. I, I think most agencies have, it, I know we did it at the sheriff's office when, um, Sheriff Benton took over trying to go paperless. And we've just got tons of stuff, um, well, we still got a lot of stuff we can get rid of, it's. Rains retention, but David, if you want to add quickly on, on it, because you're up on more than anybody and been dealing with the company.
It's a form of electronic file storage, uh, again, cutting down the paperwork. Um, that sits around in many cabinets and all throughout the basement. And it allows us to be able to retrieve records and documents in seconds. Instead of having a five-man search throughout the building, you go, well, it should be here and it should be in this box cabinet, it should be here. Um, it's just basically one big electronic storage unit. And, and you can find it by apartments and, and sub-search everything in there quickly by name. Uh, or sub-name or keyword or something, and it finds it instantly. Uh, and, and currently, the version that was bought in two thousand and fifteen, we kind of have a. Um, little dirt road back, back, back to get to the server in the basement so that we can continue to use it, even though we've been paying on it for fifteen years. Um, and so we've got scanners and, and I've been scanning and, um, applications and payroll and everything else in there, just so that we have. Electronic copies of it, and, uh, very efficient system. And it is, I mean, they stopped servicing the, the volume that we have years ago. It's like saying, we had Windows three-one-one, we're still using it. But they stopped, you know, providing any kind of support for it. Um, so they do have newer versions and, and Kim and I have looked at it and she had used it at a prior, um, city that she worked at. And I get asked and go, what exactly is this? What do you do? Because in the federal government, everything was PDF. And that's the way we store it. And she said, well, here, because of the state of Florida, this is the way that they store everything, so. Um, just started using that and, and Martin said it many times, so in my office, go, are you scanning? Yeah. And it's just, it's, it's getting rid of a ton of paperwork that we don't need to hold on to when we can make it all electronic. Uh, makes it much more efficient in the office, so. Plus, especially in the basement where that mold and everything grows on that paper, oh man, if we could get that out of there, it would be nice. But it's, it's going to be a long-term project to take. All of that stuff from paper to scan it in. Uh, and, and, and I kind of worked with him as to how we do a recycling process of. You scan for a month, it sits idle for a month, and then you shred the stuff that was scanned two months ago. So that in the event you come up with something, you say, hey, now when you scan X. You can circle back and look at the paper and if you go a month and you don't find it, then we destroy it and shred the stuff that we scanned it at that time.
I don't know if this kind of falls within this certain budget discussion here, but a while ago, or at least last year, I think that. The city had authorized a purchase of new software for the public works department and, but city hall had. Wanted that the city council did not authorize in the budget. It doesn't seem to be missed at city hall because no one's brought it up, but is the system usage that we have of our software adequate enough to. To get us through the day without having to spend an extra hundred thousand dollars on new software, other than the laser fish? Or I'm sorry, the micro fish. Fish.
Yeah, I think.
Laser fish.
Are you talking about the Navoline system?
Yes. Well, someone in the past, it was brought up that we were just. You know, it was a, an overwhelming, underwhelming program that didn't communicate with itself, but I know that it does. Um, you just talk to the owners of Navoline and they can make everything talk to itself, but. There were questions on its efficacy and, um, you know, the user, oh, the ease in which it's used and I just don't know if that's still a concern. The reason why I ask is because, you know, at some future point, someone that used to work somewhere is going to want that software here. And if ours is as, as good, then I wouldn't see a need to change. So I was just asking, from what you use. Some of its compatibility with HR and how it talks to finance and how everything else talks to itself. Isn't Navoline a pretty good system?
I'll answer that for, David goes off. Since, since I've been here. I don't use it as much as they do. It, it, they don't like it, they don't think it's a good system. Sebring was on it, they got rid of it, but I told them we're asking for enough this year. And it would take more than being here four, five, six months to make a decision. We would have to get companies in here to look at other ones. And I told them that will be next fiscal year. As of now, it works. Do they like it? Have they used better systems? They'll tell you yes. But, um, this is something you can't change overnight. You have to actually bring companies in and see what works for you. Sebring's new system, I don't know what the name of it is, they love it. Um, but again, you need a good IT person to be able to take all your information from one and put it in the other and make sure they're compatible, so. The answer is no, the system probably isn't that good according to all the users and what they've used. But I don't think this was the year to ask for, uh, more money and it takes more time to decide on, um, which system to go with.
But didn't we buy something for public works that was approved in the budget? Did that ever get implemented? Is that, is it done?
Uh, none of us know about any system that was bought. It hasn't been bought since I've been here, any. Uh, software for public works. Robert or Rick, can you comment further?
I haven't seen any software that has been brought into public works. The only thing that I've seen brought in was Andy was able to get on Navoline now, and that's it. Other than that, I haven't seen anything new.
Well, there should be a pretty big line item in the utility billing, or if not the sewer, somewhere there is a line item for a chunk of change for some, uh, software. Anyway, I, that's all I remember. Maybe it was. It was a must-minute. I didn't attend all the budget meetings, so it could have been changed.
Okay, finance department. This is actually, uh, a, a great example of how, um. People were budgeted in, in the current year. And, and based on their, uh, where they're actually being distributed or charged. Where that department's over-budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars. So you can see we've gone from a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars in salaries to sixty-nine thousand. And page thirty will kind of tell you where all those changes occurred. Um, I will say that first note was, uh, last year's original budget, um, increased. Um, the salary of the finance director, who was, I think, point six, working three days a week. To full-time and that number was a little bit understated and so that, that's basically the add. On that side of it, but then you can see, uh, there was also, um, for example, my salary, twenty-five percent of it was reclassified to the water. It's sewer's executive salary, another twenty-five percent to regular salary. And then fifty percent to the city manager. The same with Danielle's salary. Forty percent of her salary is being charged to water service and another ten percent to, uh, solid waste and then. Part of her stays in the finance department, so. That's a project that, uh, we're going to convert, uh, start making some changes during the twenty-twenty-one year. So that, uh, people, um, will be charged, uh, I, I'll say more closely to, uh, their responsibilities and. In speaking with, uh, Julie Fowler, she mentioned you should suggest perhaps. Doing, uh, uh, some sort of a time study where, uh, for maybe a couple of weeks, uh, during different quarters. Staff tracks the, where their time is being spent. And then we use that as the, basically the model on where to allocate staff salaries. That, that, that's probably not a bad idea, uh, to do that every so often. When she gave me that idea, I, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't, uh. I wasn't doing backflips in my office or handstand or anything like that because, uh. Very difficult to get employees to be that accurate without, in my opinion, without wasting too much time. Unless we know for sure. There aren't that many points, I guess, that are being allocated, uh, but even myself, I wouldn't know how much time I spend. Working on water sanitation or, you know. Because you take ten minutes here, five minutes there, or the fire pump. Um, so, yeah. Relative to that Navoline software, I, I've also maintained that, uh, just if I can add one quick comment. I see that as about a three-year process. This would be year one where we're just, uh, basically looking at, uh, demos and, and what. What systems have to offer and then maybe we, uh, cut that, whittle it down to maybe two or three people. Then we start looking at proposals in year two and, um, and also, um, basically. Start the conversion planning, because if you've never gone through a conversion plan. Through a conversion, I mean, uh, it's very, very detailed and, uh, it takes a long, long time. And then year three would actually be, uh, implementation. Uh, or going live in, in the actual conversion. And I think this, I, I don't hold on this, but. I thought Sebring told me they took about eighteen months, uh, to get through theirs. And I'm always a, a little bit more conservative on a lot of the things, so I'm going to, uh. Almost twice as long, but, uh, we've already started looking at, uh, some of the, the, uh. Programs out there and one of those was the one Sebring, uh, went to, so. Alright, um, any questions on the finance? Alright, page thirty-one is just the city attorney, that's just the one pager. And, uh, there's, uh, basically, um, we had a budget amendment during this year to bump that up to a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, the, the plan is to keep that for twenty-twenty-one. So even though the note says it's increasing at, uh, forty thousand dollars. Um, I should probably say from the original budget. Which was sixty thousand dollars for, uh, nineteen-twenty. And I know some of that, uh, probably we won't hit that hundred thousand. We're getting some reimbursements, I think. Through the whole new core process, uh, that, uh, you're basically reimbursing us for some of Jerry's time in there. Okay, okay, we're looking at that. That was page thirty-one, I'm saying. Okay, that's it.
It, just to add to that, New, New Core is paying for what Jerry did. Um, we invoice, um, Eric said that, that. I haven't heard from Danielle, well, we got the check or not, but Eric sent to me last week, they were cutting checks for that and engineering. I think total rough amount was like, between the two, it was like sixty-five thousand. And plus they're still engineering another twenty thousand they'll be paying for.
So does that money go into the miscellaneous funding revenue or that, or is that going to be offset somehow on this next year's budget?
No, it should offset the, the attorney's costs, his budget, uh, where, wherever those charges were being, uh. Expensed to that to be a negative expense. And that basically reduces total costs.
Dan, you're coming in every other word for some reason. I don't know why. Can you speak to both of your microphones, please?
Waste of time. I, I, that's all I'm, that's all I'm getting.
There's just a bad connection. I don't know why, but everyone, please speak into your microphones.
Okay. Page, uh, thirty-two and thirty-three are, uh, other governmental services and you can see, uh, what a lot of those include. The, the one thing I want to point out here is, I know at a budget meeting, uh, when we did some amendments, I said, um. That we're, and this is on page thirty-three, there's a footnote one there. Um, that we were going to rebudget the reserve for contingency. Um, for the, for the upcoming year. And then I got to thinking about it, I read the policy and, um, I'm not sure. That budgeting money in that is appropriate use for that account. And so this, let me, are, am I coming through already?
I need a lamp, can you bring me a lamp? Need a, a lamp.
So the, the way I see this, the council approves a, a budget and let's just say ten million dollars. We cannot go beyond that budget without council approval, so we can't add to that budget. And we wouldn't do that anyway. Now, that would be with no contingency in there. If you budgeted a contingency, what you're doing right off the bat is inflating your expenses. Um, so, after reading through the policy, the way I see it is. That contingency should be budgeted at zero and you can see we've spent nothing in that account for the last five years. And then let's just say, uh, we have an expenditure, uh, budgeted for, uh. Not in the general fund, but for that garbage truck. And let's say that comes out to be two hundred fifty thousand dollars. At that point in time, that excess fifty thousand dollars can be moved to that reserve account. So that, uh, we can refurbish our office with the other fifty thousand dollars, as an example, at least without permission. Of council, so I think that's the appropriate use, uh, for that reserve account. Um, uh, council members, uh, don't feel the same way about it, but, uh, in reading the policy and, and, and all the, uh. I'm going to call them the safeguards in us being able to increase, uh, a budget. It basically, that seems to make most sense to me is that during the year, we would move money into there. To, uh, that, you know, we decided we no longer needed. Or, or at least that maybe was over-budgeted. And then if we did, if, then if we need that extra money later in the year, we come back to council and ask them to release some of that reserve at that time.
Thank you.
Please, Alvin.
Oh, on page number thirty-two. Where it says the election expense and communication services, is that an increase due to the, um, election this year? Or what?
I, I think it's just, uh, kind of a. an estimate of what we think it's going to be. I don't recall even tying that into anything special. I'm trying to look at a note here that might give me approval, but that and the communication services, the same thing. The question was about, by the way, about the election communication expenses on page thirty-two. The five, it's the fourth, fifth line is down, I guess, five thousand, nine thousand dollars.
I have a question. Dan, we're, we're on what line and what department do I find where we did the buyback on the comp time and how much comp time we're doing right now? Did we not end that program as a council? Didn't we vote to end the comp time or to limit it certainly by twenty-some-odd hours?
Those are being charged to the individual salary accounts.
I don't know what you're saying. I don't know what, I don't know what you're saying.
That's the three percent you're talking about, Dan? That extra three percent that you threw in there is part of that miscellaneous expense? Is that, am I answering that question for you?
I thought the question was about this year's buyback.
Yeah.
That's where next, if it was next year, that's where it would come out of. This year, it just comes out of each individual's salary account. So one person's might come out of water, and the next person may be out of garbage, and the next person out of utility bill, depending on who elected to take the, the purchase items or the sell back.
But the council voted to limit the number of hours of comp time that our salary employees could have.
That's correct.
Okay, what, do you know what that figure is?
It's twenty-four hours, but it's not budgeted. It's just time off they get, and they get their regular salary.
But why wouldn't we budget that? Because I know that last year, for example, we, there was a buyback program as always, and then the remaining amount went into, I believe, contingency. So just recently, I know that the council reauthorized a second round of that. I think it was the third round. I'm not sure. If it didn't come out of contingency, then did it come out of salaries? Like, like, like unfilled positions or something like that?
Yes, and I, and I can say when we did that at the sheriff's office, it just came out. I call it lapsed money. I don't know what Dan calls it. But it's, it's money that's in there where you haven't filled positions or haven't filled them halfway through the year. It's just money that, yeah, would go back if you didn't allow them to buy some of their time back. But there, there wasn't a line item just for the.
So, so if, if you go over twenty-four hours, do you automatically lose it?
I believe that's in the policy. I think there's a policy on that. Twenty-four hours, if you don't use it, you lose it. I do recall that. I don't think that that's changed. I don't know. I mean, it hasn't changed since I've been on this council. It's always been twenty-four. That's, but that, you know what? That's not for union employees. That's only for like management and supervisors and administration. The unions have their own set of, of, of how much comp time they can accrue. But regardless of that, between all of them, if they accrue so many.
That we can see?
Yeah, but you know what? You're confusing, I'm confusing two things. Comp time to do with the buyback program, for one thing. Buyback program is your vacation time.
Right.
Right? And sick time. So the vacation and sick time, that's part of your salaries, right, Dan?
Right.
Okay, so then what I'm thinking is, when you were talking at first, that the miscellaneous amount of, or whatever the, as you described it, the three percent that's allocated per employee wasn't a raise. What it was, was the three percent that would be used for buyback, right?
That would be one example of how that could be used, yes.
Okay, because other than that, if there's no line item for that, then we don't have a figure. There's just no number. So, you know, historically, we've had a line item for the buyback program. That way, we know how much of it got used, and, and everyone went to that one account for the funding. It seems that if you, and it was only for one round. I don't know how many rounds have been done. I know that we recently approved, like I said, another round. I don't know if people did it for once or twice, but it got done sometime last year. But that was a budget by us, and it allowed us to fund it or not. And the buyback program is not a given. It's not a guarantee. If you read the policy, it's not a guarantee. So if you're funding something that's not guaranteed, to me, the buyback program should be a line item that the council approves or does not approve, only because it's the only way to really allocate the dollars there. But, you know, how you do your accounting is just, it's a different way, at least from my mind. Because how else would you put something back into a contingency like we did?
Well, I thought, I thought when Kim was acting city manager, she stopped all comp time. Has it been reinstated?
Oh, he froze again. Stanley, you froze. Whatever you were saying, you froze out.
Whenever Kim was acting city manager, she, she stopped all comp time. Has that program been reinstated to our salary employees?
When I came here, it wasn't stopped. And no, the salary employees get comp time and can use it.
It wasn't stopped when you came in?
No.
There was a letter to that effect. She, she had sent out a letter to that effect.
When I was the interim city manager, I stopped comp time for all the salaried employees because it was being abused.
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
And then some of the department heads that were allowing it were gone, allowed me and Danielle and Suzie, who all accrue forty hours of comp time as, as salaried employees during the time that we were in trims. And then after that was all done, everything just kind of went back to the way it used to be.
Of twenty-four hours?
Yes. But yes, Stanley, that, that was right.
The question is, do we want to put a line in the budget for that or not?
Well, you can't do a comp time thing. I mean, but the, but the buyback, I think, should be a line item. And we stick to that, because otherwise, when no money is there, it will get spent. So, you know, it's a one-time thing. It was considered a Christmas thing for people that could have Christmas money prior to Thanksgiving, and now it's morphed into a bona fide, we expect it and demand our, our buyback. And, you know, I think we're the only people in Highlands County that do that, or, for anybody. So, just saying, to me, it would be helpful for me to have an actual line item for that. That's just me.
It was, it was, it was put in as a second time because of comeback, because I brought it up. And it wasn't, you know, what the. It was something that.
Yeah, but my point.
You know?
Yeah, but my point. Anyway, my point, Brenda, was that it was originally a line item. It was used to its extent sometime in two thousand nineteen, and then the balance of that got put back into contingency. It was a line item. Recently, at your request, and the council approved, we did it again. So it didn't come out of contingency, because that requires council approval. So it came from somewhere else, which I'm thinking it came out of unfilled positions. But the point is, did we, or in that, then what was originally allocated in the original budget when it was a line item? Because when it's a line item, you could actually register it. But if you leave it in as a miscellaneous expense under salaries and wages and that, it, it could be endless. It will. It could, and it will, because we all know what's there like that. I would just rather have, to me, a line item specifically for that, whether we approve it up or down, based off of historic use, and that's that. Once it's done, it's done. But opening it, and opening it, I just don't agree to that. Because, you know, if they want to open it again, where are we going to come up with the money for that? Back to contingency, or are we going to open it up under wages? To me, it ought to be just a set amount. End of story.
Dan?
But that's up to the council to decide.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Dan, it's a big deal. Put that line in there.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it was seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe, years ago. So it's a big chunk of change.
Could you please? Dan, is that something that you can do, which is something that makes sense? It tells me, but I don't know what department to put it into, then, or do I put it into each department? And if you put it in, then aren't you, then is that guaranteeing that it's going to happen? Just like, some council numbers believe that we're guaranteeing a three percent rate because it's in my budget as such.
Right. Well, that would be my argument, is that in council, every year that we do it, the council agrees.
Right.
So at that time, just, just as if we're getting a grant, we can then make that choice at that time.
Correct.
Is there? I'm trying to weigh the positives and the negatives. Is there any negative to doing it that way?
No, I, I don't, the only thing I can say is that your departments would probably not be appropriately charged, which, that's the purpose of an accounting system, is to provide information. And so how much did fire cost you? How much does code cost you? How much, you know? Well, if we put one line item in, in the city council budget, maybe in the city council department, or PTO vacation buybacks, I guess we can do that.
And then, and if you didn't get it that way, then you can allocate it to which department that decides to do. Like, you have three people in the water department, or you would even put charges there, area department.
Well, if you want to split the line item in that, well.
And I, and I can see what you're saying for an accounting purposes, as, as Andrew, is that if you've got several different departments, and you have like four people in this department, four people in that department, then how would you allocate it out, when time to use it? I understand what you're saying. It's an accounting idea, and you have to.
Do you see a problem with continuing the way it was done in the past year? Find out.
No.
I don't even.
But for you being new, you don't see that way.
Well, we've never had a line item before.
No, no. And it always has come out of wherever, the big guy or wherever, you know?
Let's continue to grow the network.
That's, that's what I would say as well.
Well, and like, you guys just did this last one here. It just came out, where like Mark had said, we've got all these unfilled positions, salary that's had not been filled for the last ten months of the fiscal year. Therefore, that money is not being used, and we could use it, it's still paying salary. Because every department had people that took the buyback. Might have only been, like you said, two or three, or you might have had seven or eight of them. But they all, every department had somebody for some money that bought back. So it's not like you're saying you took all these funds right from, you know, whatever, every salary position, or all people getting salaries bought into it, so.
All right, moving on. Page thirty-four is police. And there's one comment there about the state contribution. That's just an offset to the revenue. It's money that comes from the state. We just turn it right around and cut a check to the retirement system. So that's what that one forty-nine thousand dollar line is in the personnel area. And then we don't have contract proposal yet, that I'm aware of, from the sheriff's office. So for the timing, we put a four percent increase on that contract. And I'm going to say that the increase over the last four or five years has been anywhere between, I don't remember now, like two and a half and six percent, or three and six, or something like that. So I thought four would be, you know, kind of a fair number, and we'll wait for that, for the contract and adjust it when that comes in. Page thirty-six starts the fire budget. And their retirement system is very similar to the police, although the reimbursement is a little bit different. But you can see it's just a flat amount based on some discussion I had with Foster and Foster, I believe it is. They're our actuaries for the two pension funds. And based on, based on some reserves, they have some providing better turnover payments to the fund. They estimated about three hundred twenty-five thousand. The actual estimate was about three fifteen. Maybe it was three eighteen, and I bumped it up to three twenty-five, just to, just to make sure we had a bit of a cushion there. We're going to be hiring hopefully some firefighters, or firefighters that are already in the budget that are being built. So then those costs would not be showing in their retirement, through the pension salaries. Number, footnote number three is fifteen thousand dollars. That's that assessment in methodology study that we're planning on doing this coming year. Council may remember that there was, we had the preliminary assessment at the last council meeting. That's what this kind of relates to. The fifteen thousand not only includes the full loan assessment, the methodology study, but also the, as I understand it now, because I've asked a couple of vendors, that would also include the interim, basically what we're paying for this year, to update the file, some of that. At that point in time, then, council will review that report through a ceiling as to what we can cap, what we can charge. By no means does that mean we will charge that ceiling, but that will be, I'll say, up the discussion at that point in time. There's a slight increase in the travel per day for a couple of new positions. And then on page thirty-seven, there's ninety-eight hundred dollars asked for radios, hydrostatic tester, and fire, fire phone, and gas detector. Any questions on fire, or I think the chief might be out here, you might be able to also answer any questions you might have about him.
I'm here. Yeah, but everybody loves a fireman. You're right.
Okay, coenforcement, we keep raining the night off, I believe, so he's not here today. There is, again, the first thing is an add. We heard council that about adding a building inspector part-time. Building inspectors are not, they're not cheap. And so we're building, we're billing, or estimating about forty-five thousand, forty-five, seventy-five costs, as well as benefits. There was one extra, one half-time coenforcement officer, over-budgeted. He was budgeted as full-time, but his, the reality was half-time. So we decreased that by, you know, that position by a half. And then there is an increase in professional fees for magistrate hearings. And my understanding is that we could actually RFP those services and maybe bring that cost down a little bit, or at least make sure we get some competitive, some competitive quotes. But Randy, when we had our discussion, Randy Mark and I, the department budget discussion, he's definitely in the mind that we're going to be increasing the magistrate hearings after this COVID thing passes over. Then you can also see there are some smaller increases for travel per day, and training. Gasoline is kind of a real bare minimum formula that I included in gasoline budget. Uh, gasoline is kind of a, uh, real bare minimum formula that I included in gasoline budget. And then, uh, subscriptions and memberships for the coenforcement officer. Questions on those? Planning and zoning is on page forty, and there's no change to that, uh, budget, as it stands right now. So we're gonna go right into streets now, and, uh, that starts on page forty-one, and goes for, uh, three pages, for forty-three. So this is, uh, we're looking to add two, uh, staff members for science maintenance. That estimated cost would be fifty thousand dollars in salaries and another thirty in fringe benefits. And then we're also looking, the second note says, two new staff members for stormwater maintenance. Now, those two will be split one-third to streets, one-third to parks, and one-third to solid waste. So the street department is assuming two of those one-thirds, which is why it said at seven each for stormwater maintenance. Um, then you see, uh, a few classifications there, reclassification. Um, actually, it goes on the point of way to the bottom of page forty-three, at which time, uh, there's a slight increase for, uh, gasoline budget. And then also an increase of fifty-six thousand dollars for, uh, two pickup trucks for those two stormwater guys that are made, that will be charged, that are one-third each to the three departments.
Just one question on the top one there for the, do new staff members were signed? Did you elaborate on what the sign, did it make things out, or?
Yeah, actually, I got Robert on, he can probably, it's, he figures it's good, a year, almost two years, get all our signs up and get them all, so they all look the same. And, um, then after that, it'd be maintenance and probably mowing, but, uh, but the main thing is with the staff we have, there's no way that we can get these signs up. Because Rob, I mean, there's a lot of them missing as we ride around and see them. And make sure all the stop signs, yield signs, and road ends shortly, or turns left or right, anything liability they're up. But as he says, through the years, there hasn't been a, um, a uniform way of these signs up. Some are big, some are small. As I told him, we got some street signs up there on top of stop signs, some around one, of the opposite side of the road, some around, uh, a different pole next to a stop sign. But Robert, do you wanna add to that?
I have not much more to add. It's just, uh, we cannot, the staff that I have right now, we cannot keep up with, uh, doing any, any sign repair. And our city is really bad at signs right now. We got a lot of signs down that have been blown down from storms for previous years. And we don't have the manpower to put them back up. I need help on that. And two guys would really help us on getting that, those signs back up and get the city back where it is.
And, and if I can add to that, Mayor.
Yeah.
On this, you'll see, we're not asking for new vehicles, because that'd be two vehicles. But Robert and I talked, and the mechanic is supposed to be getting a new vehicle. It was ordered before I came here, but because of COVID, it's probably not gonna be here until after the next fiscal year. But we're gonna take his old one, and we're gonna make that into a sign truck, so that two of them can operate out of that. Um, because two people can get these signs up quick. And, um, so to me, that'd be a savings there for, you know, just the, the cost of, uh, the employees. And as Robert says, as we all know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, signs are all down. It would make the place look so much nicer to have the, all the signs up and also looking the same.
Do we make, do, do, do we make our own signs, or how does that, quote, man?
That, Robert, go ahead.
I, I didn't hear the question.
Do we make our own signs, or, um, where do we get our signs from?
The signs we're getting from the county. The county makes our signs for us. I can give to the county than anywhere else.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My favorite intersection is the Elm Cray in Florida, because the Elm Cray on one side is all caps, and the other side, it's capital, first letter, and then small, the rest of it. Anyway, I drive by there every day. All right. Um, any other questions on streets? Okay, parks starts on page forty-four. And that goes on for, uh, the page forty-six. And so the highlight there, again, um, one new staff member for parks, twenty-two and, uh, twenty-two six plus benefits of fourteen thousand. They will also have the, uh, one new truck, which is footnote three on page forty-six. Twenty-five thousand is being budgeted for that, plus a trailer and lawn mowing equipment. So the total would be thirty-six thousand dollars, um, on top of that salary. The second footnote there on the, uh, the second number one is one-third each of those same two street, water and sewer, uh, solid waste, parks and street guys. So that's where part of those salaries are being added. Yes?
Is there anywhere, is this, this is part here that, that talks about, um, um, mowing of, you know?
Mow. Yes, that's, that's the eighty thousand dollars listed on footnote number two.
I, I, I didn't get this part of the letter, so I.
Well, you'll probably find some more of his, it, it's good if you can get him on his little addition thing, so I won't give him a hard time.
Oh, okay.
But yes, it's in there, as I brought up before in my time here, and talking to Robert, and actually talking to some citizens. COVID kind of cut down a lot of that, but with what the staff we have, we can't maintain that mowing. Everything else we got, and I, I really think that is, okay, looking at it the way it goes.
Thank you.
One of the other, I, I just wanna quickly, uh, one of the other things Brent brought up was that sometimes the totals don't add up, um, and like by a dollar, and that's because of rounding. So, um, and as I told her, I've been doing budgets for so long, I just assumed that, um, the rounding errors will be known, but she pulled one out right away, so she's gone through this in quite a bit of detail. Uh, culture and recreation, there's no change to that budget. It's just, uh, I'm gonna call it a standard ten thousand dollars being budgeted, uh, at this moment. And those are for donations, um, to nonprofits. All right, uh, recreation starts on page forty-seven. And, uh, there's no real changes there other than, um, reclassifying a couple of people, um, in or out of the department. If you look at, uh, on page forty-seven, about halfway through, uh, there, it's a, uh, building repair and maintenance, which is forty-six dash ten. That budget goes down actually from seventy-five, uh, from eighty-five thousand to, uh, ten thousand dollars. That was for the, the rec center. Um, I guess they had new floor put in, uh, after some storm damage, and that was offset by insurance reimbursement. So obviously, we're not, we're hoping we don't have another seventy-five thousand dollar additional expenditure in the next couple of months, uh, due to a storm again. Community center, uh, page forty-nine, that's, uh, just a clear roll over budget. No change there. And then now, that basically ends the general fund, and we're now going to the infrastructure fund. And infrastructure money is, uh, basically funded by the infrastructure surtax. And so there, and we had some discussion about this, I believe, at the last council meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and so there are some specific uses as to how that money can be used. Um, so for the current year, nineteen twenty, we had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for windows, which is not likely going to happen, although one of those refurbishments that, uh, for next year, twenty-five thousand may actually occur this year then. And that's for the, uh, safety features that the utilities billing window. So that, uh, uh, as far as the twenty-twenty-one budget goes, at a hundred thousand dollars, it may be seventy-five thousand, or it may be readjusted, uh, to find another, maybe start a project that might take place in that building. Um, the CIP has, uh, we're looking at, uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, looking at, uh, beginning to start looking at the roof on that building. Um, it's still in pretty good shape, but Robert was on there the other day when, uh, I think, uh, an air conditioner leaf was dripping in, uh, into the ceiling, uh, up above there. And, uh, it's starting to get a little brittle and a little worn, so at some point in time, we're hoping another year, that the roof will, will last. But that will be paid through with infrastructure surtax money. Police on page fifty-one, infrastructure surtax money is allowed to be spent for, uh, in part for safe money permit. And, uh, that's where, that's where that, uh, police car every year comes out of, um, thirty thousand dollars. It's part of that sheriff contract with the, with the county sheriff in the city. So that, that money's coming out of that infrastructure tax money as well. And I have to roll over again, um, for thirty thousand. Page fifty-two, you might recall that Harding Grant that I spoke about, uh, early on. Um, in the revenue section, this is the expense side of it. And, uh, we're estimating about eighty thousand dollars for the roof replacement, and then twenty thousand for the scuffle repair, or, uh, more simply, the exterior walls. Um, and again, if that grant, uh, ends up being more, then at that point in time, we'll make adjustments to the budget for that. Um, and if the grant comes through, then, uh, this, the infrastructure budget may actually be relieved of this expense, uh, because that will be grant covered at that time. Uh, coenforcement, there's nothing in their budget for infrastructure. That's page fifty-three. So we're just, uh, we're gonna push on that one for right now. Then page fifty-four is, uh, streets, and this is, uh, the same as last year's budget again. Um, definitely, this qualifies as infrastructure expenses. And, uh, Mark and myself, uh, we've, uh, and, and Kim, and, uh, David, we've been talking a little bit about, uh, when the new RIC comes in, um, how we, how we would like to see some of that, uh, some of this money, uh, being spent, or at least allocated over the years.
He's talking about the public works director.
Rick Willan, yeah. We'll, we'll have two RICS in the public works, at a minimum, maybe a third one, I'm not sure. Um, so you can see a hundred thousand dollars for street sidewalks and curbs, three hundred for streets, and then another hundred thousand for stormwater. And again.
Can I ask you a question? I mean, I see the actuals that you have for nineteen twenty. That actually has not been spent though, right?
No, I, uh, I think a very small amount has been spent, um.
So, so some of the sidewalks is because we found out they were taken out of the wrong place. So there will become some down, the roads, no. But the, on the sidewalk.
But not to, I mean, in terms of sidewalks, I mean, you're talking what, not a hundred thousand dollars, though? You're talking a lot less than that.
I'm just saying there, there has been some coming out of there, but they, they've been taken out of the, the wrong, the wrong place.
Out of, out of those three, out of that five hundred thousand dollars, currently, we've spent about thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, thirty thousand is in stormwater, and then fifteen hundred is in sidewalks and curbs, sidewalk and curb.
With more coming out of them.
And on your next, when you do the next budget, is there a way that you could show the, um, actual to date in terms of expenses? Because when you look at the previous budget, it's the assumption that that money was spent when it really wasn't. And it kind of has a little, you know, kind of tricky to read, at least from my perspective. But would there be a way to do an actual for nineteen twenty to date as another column?
And, and you bring up a good question. I asked the same thing, because I've come to the sheriff's office, that's what we looked at. But this year, until Dan got here, we had money coming out of places there was no money in. And when we start new and be able to take money out where it's supposed to come out of, because I look, Dan looks, make sure it's coming out of the right line item now, I see no reason why we can't show actuals this time next year.
And I almost asked you that question, uh, Dan, uh, when I spoke to people today, uh, because that's what we were accustomed to, was spent today. And, and, but then I thought about it, and I said, well, 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 this is, um, this, that, that would be kind of hard to do, right, at this point, because the budget was not intact last year.
Well, I think I could get an actual year-to-date in for the current year. Are you talking about before we, before September twenty-fourth, I guess, Maria?
Well, I mean, don't you think it would be helpful for us? Because you're, you're asking for dollar amounts where we haven't, and we don't know if they were ever going to be spent. You know, it's kind of, it, it seems kind of arbitrary, you know?
I can try to get some updates.
I'm sorry if I, if my sound is coming in weird. My husband is mowing the lawn right now, so I can hardly hear you guys. Sorry.
Well, I, I, I'll just say, we agree with you, and that's how I like to, when we go into a new budget. I want to see where we're spending money now. In this case is, with a new work director, this money will be spent on roads that need repairing and sidewalks that need repairing. But yeah, where there's another one, say it's ten thousand dollars, and you don't spend it, well, do you need it next time? So, Dan said, I'm more of a zero-based, um, and, and doing a budget, but I, I like to look at it, if you're not spending it, why are you asking for it again? But in this, this case here, it just hasn't been used, because you, you lost a director out there, and, and they didn't even realize this money was there, um, to use for these items, so, but we agree with it.
We, and we just, I think, I think I can get those in. Um, again, there's still some expenditures that, uh, you know, we had during September, but, uh, you know, you'll get an idea. Um, some of our discussion on this, on the infrastructure is to, you know, basically partition the city in, you know, so many segments, and, and basically rotate every year, so, you know, this quadrant or whatever gets, gets funding, you know, for repairs. Uh, and then any other repairs outside of that, you're, you know, would automatically become, but, uh, this is again, uh, a discussion for when, uh, the new, uh, public works person comes on board. Now, is your husband going to mow them up right of way, Maria?
I'm mowing, so I'm, I'm hanging out in the hallway right now.
Did you hear my question?
No, sorry. Does my husband mow me?
Mowing the right of way or not?
What?
Don't see that lawn.
Never mind.
Sorry, I missed it.
And I, I, I can get that extra year in there, but it's gonna make that font a little bit smaller. All right, well, we'll try. We'll see how it looks.
Well, you could print it on legal paper.
Well, we can do that too. Um, I don't know how well council would like to log around legal paper, but. Okay, um, page fifty-five is the recreation infrastructure budget, and, uh, that's where this R-PAC, uh, that, you know, that grant would come out of here, um, that, uh, for the remodel of, uh, the Allison Park bathrooms. And, you know, we're anticipating seventy-five, twenty-five split. Um, and so that's, uh, this is where that money would come out of.
You know, let, let me ask you a question. I probably missed it. Last year, you know, sometime this year, we were talking about, uh, some R-PAC funds that was set aside for, like, Tulane Playground. Did those funds get spent, or what happened with those funds?
Those are in, uh, well, they were, from what I recall, the money was for irrigation at Durham Martin. I think scoreboards somewhere, which I think ended up getting funded. I think scoreboards somewhere which I think ended up getting funded through a different source. And what was, do you know the third one? The third one is what's in there. Oh, Donaldson Park bathroom.
No, that's not, that's not. Well, I'm talking about the funds that was from RPAC that was for the equipment. The playground equipment what was set aside for Lake Tulane.
They got held up because we were trying to get the property ownership worked out and all that stuff.
Yeah, there you go. That money, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we have this. Sitting there and I'm waiting on two law firms to.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's still there.
Oh, it's there. Robert gets to me every couple of weeks and says, hey, do we have that land yet? And I'm like, let me email the lawyers again. But no, it's there. As soon as, soon as we get it quick deeded, we'll get the equipment.
But if we don't own the land, are we still maintaining it?
Yes, Maria.
Yes, we are. We're still on it.
It would be a disaster if we didn't, trust me.
55. Oh, 55, yeah, we threw that one in there. That's the fire grant. Okay, the CDBG, you recall my, our discussion about you spend it and you get it reimbursed as you spend it. So we have 50,000 in that budget for revenue anticipating this $50,000, which is right here on the expenditure side. If it goes up, we'll have to come back for, you know, an increase in the budget. But again, it's, that one's basically a zero sum.
Dan, if I may, that's assuming that that 50,000 is coming from us?
No, that would be coming, that's the grant money being reimbursed.
I mean, we're looking at a, I don't understand. I mean, the proposed total of 50, but the project is $800,000. But there was additional money on top of that. So you're proposing 50,000. Is that our money that we're going to be spending on this 800, of that 800,000? I mean, is it now an $850,000 job or is it a $750,000 job?
The budget, I'm going to say when we got the grant last year or the year before, it was $750,000 in grant money and then $50,000 I think was the local match. This 50 is, that's just, that's just both of them together, I guess, you know, whatever.
Well, I don't, I don't recall there being a local match. I thought it was ship funds from the county. So that proposed total, I don't know if that should be a zero. And, you know, Guardian, the consultants ought to know, I mean, they put the grant together, but there was money coming from the county and CDBG funds. And from what I recall, there was no money from the city going into that. So I'm just asking if that really is an accurate number because, you know, 50,000 is quite a bit.
Well, again, it's, it is quite a bit, but in this budget, it's, the assumption is that it'll be offset with some sort of a drawdown funding. The budget itself in 2020, this is back on page 13, says $750,000 CDBG grant. And then $50,000 from grants from other local units. That's how it's labeled.
And that would be the county.
Right. Okay, there you go.
That's the ship funds then. I thought it was more. I thought it was more like 150. I didn't realize it was just 50.
But we did just recently get from the state asking about, you know, the drawdown. And so I sent Guardian an email asking them, you know, about, you know, where this is. Because they're monitoring the grant, so.
So in terms of the single audit process, if you don't have the budget reflecting the actual grant, even though it has, it was allocated for last year, but of that money, not all of it has been spent. So will there have to be a single audit done for 2020, 21 or only 1920? Is it based off of the year of funding or the year of spending?
I think it's the year of spending, well, funding slash spending. Because if you spend it, the auditors will put it in as receivable anyway and they'll accrue the revenue. So I believe it's the year that it's being spent or that's due to.
Okay.
The next few pages, this is the CRA expense budgets. So page 57 is the Main Street CRA. And a lot of this is the, again, it's just a rollover at this time until, until the advisory board. And then the board can basically hammer out the details here. So the revenue and expenditures in these budgets are the same, they equal each other. The assumption is that the money we take in is what we're going to spend, even though that hasn't, hasn't happened, I know, probably for several years. But some of that might be accumulated for a future project. And, you know, that's pretty much how it will go. I do have a note on page 58 about the brickle building and forgiving that loan balance. I'm not sure if that note is valid anymore now because there's some discussion about doing some other things now with the brickle building. But as, if that loan is forgiven, that would generate a revenue entry that would favorably impact the Main Street CRA account, reserve account.
One thing on the Main Street is that they are no longer doing event grants. And you have an expenditure for events for $12,000. There's no application form for that. In fact, it was discouraged by our city attorney. So I see that they posed another 12,000. Was that their input for that? Or is it just carried over from last year as a, we did it?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I'm talking as if we're live and I forget that there's an interruption then. But no, that's just a rollover from the prior year budget. There was no input by them.
Okay, because I know you said that they were still working. Okay, you said they were still working on their budget. I think that maybe, you know, that's something that they need to reconsider perhaps, just saying. And then, I mean, I know you were jumping on to page 58, ask on page 57, you have a $20,000. Where was it? No, I'm sorry. It was a $14,000 other contractual service. What's that? Who's that for?
If you want, I can look it up right now and it won't take me very long to find it.
Is that Leroux?
That is some of Leroux, but not, not all of them, because I think he's about $1,500 to each fund. Okay, so currently there's only, this is not a good example of why, you know, to have those current expenses in there. $1,725 has been spent out of that fund and that is almost all Leroux. There was a P card purchase for about 60 bucks out of there too.
How much did you say altogether from Leroux?
1666 for Leroux. So his charge, they charged must be about $5,000 for all three of them. And so that's the only charge to that account right now.
Okay.
But we had, you know, four years ago, I don't know, maybe that was at the beginning. Maybe that was when the Main Street addition was taking place. There was a larger charge there for about 15,000 total.
Okay. And then in terms of the 5,000 mall maintenance, Jim, is that the Christmas lights you were talking about?
I believe so.
57.
57.
And by the way, in terms of travel in Perdiem, they usually have the Florida Redevelopment Association Conference, which typically the volunteers that serve on those boards go to, spend hotel time, et cetera, et cetera. That's not happening because of COVID. All of the FRA meetings and things have been put on Zoom. So that expense right there, they're made high as the 4,000. I know I'm nitpicking on this thing, but it's because they have so little bit of money as it is that, you know, if they can use more of that for projects and things like their plan says, then it would make them a lot happier knowing they have more money to do that with. So just consideration that that 4,000 may be too much on travel in Perdiem.
Maria, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You said that the.
The FRA.
The $12,000 event expenditures is no longer going to happen for the Main Street.
Well, we, yeah, we didn't, we didn't fund any. In fact, the application for events has been done away with. All they do are facades right now. No one's applied for event grants. Haven't you noticed? It got eliminated. You know, it was that whole Jerry thing about bricks and mortar only, you know, removal of slum and blight. And that the events was not part of that, that he couldn't, it wouldn't meet the threshold for the criteria to meet those standards. So none of them were done. I mean, it was budgeted, but the money's just sitting there. They're not accepting event grants.
So is that for the South Side as well? Did they decide that as well, the South Side?
Well, altogether, the entire board did. Now, what was set aside was a separate fund for the MLK event, which is not even from the CRA. That comes from the city.
Yeah, but I'm looking here on the, and that's what I thought, the South Side, the $4,000 event grant expenditure, event expenditures. What is that?
Yeah. Well, yeah, and that might be surplus cash for them at this point because they're not doing events. Like I said, do events is the MLK event and that comes out of city funds as part of that community little pot that's used for the community. It's not, it doesn't come out of CRA anymore in order to avoid the whole issue of events. So.
Anything else on CRAs? Or doing?
Well, when we get to the airport, I did have a question on the airport. And I don't know if the council will be agreeable to this, but you know, we're talking, that would be page 60, I believe. I know that in the city's budget, we had put 60,000 aside for the airport FBO, a person over there. And we knew it was not sustainable, so that position was never filled. Considering that the airport will only have about $6,400 in revenue this year, I was going to request that the council consider that we use CRA money to fund half of a position or if not a consulting position to do marketing and economic development for the airport. And also economic development for Main Street and South Side in terms of retention and recruitment of businesses. We don't have that in the county for us, even though there is the TDC. It's a totally different animal. I think that we possibly could do this if the city could fund basis, based on the fact that there's general fund revenue from the top on the first few pages where there was a part-time position funded as though it's full-time. And we've already been told that it's actually a part-time, not full-time. There's money right there. General funding possibly from the three CRAs, each one prorated for itself in terms of the amount that it would spend. So if looking at all of this event money, let's just say, I think we have sufficient there to start out with some kind of a marketing consultant, someone maybe with a real estate degree, something that will help us with economic development. And I think that we can find that. And I would like to see whether the council would be amenable to letting the CRA board, advisory board, put the job description together because they're the ones that would be, you know, this person would be answering to them. And partly to the city because it would be partly the city. But if we can hybrid that position with funding, I think that we can get something going over there, which is sorely needed. I think that all of us have heard the stories of how desperately we need someone at the airport to market it. We've got this little jewel that's just sitting there in the rough. So I don't know if this is something you all would agree to, but if so, with some of this, like I said, there's money here and there in different departments and things. I mean, we're funding for signs. We're funding for mall maintenance and we're not funding for the airport staff. And I think it's, we do that.
Maria, let me say something about the South Side CRA. Even though I'm not on the board, I would prefer if there was any additional funds that the South Side CRA would have to come up with, I would prefer that being spent on a facade grant and eliminating the funds that the individuals have to pay. Because right now what we do, that's why a lot of the South Side don't apply for the facade grants, because they don't have the additional funds that match money in there. So we pay full amount for any business to do a facade grant. But when it comes down to the residents, especially on the South Side, then they have to put something in there.
No, that's not true. That's not true. The board consolidated, if you look at the application form, you will see that both Main Street and South Side are identical. The only time that a South Side resident pays for a facade grant for a residential is when it's a rental. But if it's homeowner occupied, they get free and clear $2,500 per residence.
Right. There's no match.
There's no match. There's that. And that just goes as the money goes. So no, the board fixed that. I mean, they went ahead and corrected that so that there wouldn't be any match. If you're a rental, yes, just like Main Street does. But if you are fully owning it and you live in it, then no, no match. And businesses are also, there's equity on both sides there. They each get 5,000 with no match.
The last time that I can remember, it was the lady that came up, and I don't want to call her name. And she applied for the roof fixing on her house. And she lives in the house and she had several estimates. And then she had to, she was told, matter of fact, she was advised by you to wait till the CDBG grant come out and apply.
Right.
And but she, but the thing was that she had to pay at least $5,000, which she did not have. And right now, nothing has been done on her house.
So her house, her roof, if I recall correctly, it was $9,000. And all the CRA was going to give was 25. And for that special moment, that one evening, she was fully funded with the premise that she would have for a CDBG first. So she was going to get 100% of that 9,000 or so. That was that one case because it's case by case. So, you know, if she wants to go, I mean, that's been a while. So it would have to be, someone needs to go look at the minutes and see what it says. I think it was around that amount. But that was the only time ever in the history of the CRA that they funded more than what was in the actual application. Because it was such a unique case. So I don't know. Did she apply for a CDBG?
Yes.
It would be helpful. Yeah. So I don't know what the results are of those CDBGs yet. I don't know what the status is of that. I know several people that have applied and haven't heard back. So that's something that, you know, staff will have to let us know what, where they are with that.
Yeah, they're, they've been, they've been working on it. Guardian has been working on it and whoever else is involved in it with them. They have reviewed the applications and, and sent the homeowners back letters requesting any other information that was not provided to them that they needed. They've just received back the additional information from anyone that needed it. So I'm, I haven't heard either exactly when they're going to have it, but I will check because I was assuming that it was going to be in September. But I will double check and see if I can get a more definitive answer on that.
Okay, we're going back to what you were saying. I just would probably see, I would have to think about putting funds, especially, well, I would have to say so, but recommending funds on the South Side CRA to be spent. Be divided upon for the airport or anything at this particular time.
And it may just come out of Main Street and Airport, you know? It's the board, the advisory board will make their recommendations to city council for final review. Which by the way, in September, I got appointed to the Economic Development Land Use Committee for the Florida League of Cities, which oversees CRAs. And Jerry Bier will be presenting in September. And hopefully I'll be on that committee to help see whether or not we can have our CRA become autonomous. So that's good news. Anyway, Kim, if you could get that info for the CDBG, that would be great. And you might have to pull the minutes. It would have been the very first CRA meeting, don't you think Brenda, of two and what? Yeah, I know it's not, but you know, it comes down to seeing how much money we have in the series. I know the CRAs don't have a lot of money, but it's the one organization that has, you know, the closest proximity to our business economic development, which we don't have anyone with the city that does that. So we rely on these individuals to help us and guide us on how they think this money should be spent. And I think we need to listen to them. That's just my say. Anyway, moving on.
Okay, we're, page 61 starts the water fund. There are five different departments in this fund. And the first one is the water billing services. And those are the people you see. And those are the people who see the city hall. That's where this department is. I will say that footnote number two, which says, which talks about upgrading meter reader tablets, that one I missed. I was supposed to pull that out, carrying over into the different iterations. So I've got that marked off to be deleted. So that $50,000 is not going to be spent, at least not this year. And then, for whatever reason, I don't know why the 1920 budget does not have a bad debt expense, but when that was coming through, you know, through some of the auditing and some of the original discussions in finishing up the 19 budget, for whatever reason, they didn't budget anything in the current year. So I'm adding $54,000. It's just an estimate. I call it an average. It's not even an average. I'm just trying, I guess it's 90% of that $60,000, but it's a start, which hadn't been budgeted in, at least in the current year. So you can see there's definitely been expenditures. And Mark, I think, talked a little bit about some of the delinquencies in, in the water billing because of the whole COVID thing, maybe three or four meetings ago. That's billing, water billing. Page 63 is the sewer service disposal department. And outside the, boy, there's a lot of stuff here. There's a big ask, especially on the equipment side in this area. After we get through the.
I'm sorry, a big what? A big what?
I call it an ask, basically.
Oh, I thought you said, take the K out of that. I thought you said there was a big.
I've lost a little weight, so it's fine.
Okay.
No, it's an ask.
Okay.
All right, so there is the, the increase there in sledge hauling. You can see $30,000. That's on page 63. That's the number two footnote. And then for number three, we get chemical labs and supplies. And again, these are basically increases in, in materials that we've noticed, that Rick has noticed in the last, I'm going to say six to 12 months, or they've actually been announced increases. So we're trying to compensate for some of that. Footnote number five, there's this perishable, perishable tools and operating supplies. There's never been anything budgeted in this account during our meetings. Rick and Mark and I have. And these are things that just, you know, maybe it's a sawzall, or you know, your equipment maybe breaks, or motor burns out, or whatever it might be. We're, we're trying to put some sort of an allowance for just what they call consumable or perishable, perishable tools. So that would be, you know, things not as, not as expensive as, you know, some of the equipment that we're going to talk about, but it, it provides at least some opportunity to have something, you know, in the budget for those kind of circumstances. Then at the bottom, at page 64, there in the capital area, you can see there's a whole bunch of footnotes there. And those, those are basically lined out one by one in the notes then. So for example, the lift station project, there's $110,000 being budgeted for data flow systems. That's called SCADA. That's $96,000. And then another $14,000 for the antenna to allow those units to communicate back to the treatment facility electronically or wireless, if you're however you want to refer to it. Footnote number six talks about reassigning the $850,000 from the old water effluent project. $205,000 is being reassigned for wastewater improvement. $60,000 is being reassigned for machinery and equipment. And then the balance of $585,000, that's the, the one time, at least, I shouldn't say one time, but that's the offset back to the general fund where I mentioned earlier, the revenue budgets, that the water fund was going to basically increase their contribution back to the general fund, at least budgeted at the moment for the 2021 year. And that reduces the impact of the throw on reserves in that general fund budget. The other part of number six, that $205,000 that I just mentioned is being reassigned is to purchase chlorine skid sets for Crystal Lakes, $85,000, and then for the Glenwood plant, I guess, I'll call it, facility for $110,000. And then also $10,000 for chlorine analyzer. And as it mentions, it's being offset by reassignment of funds. The septic treatment plant project, $1.8 million, that was removed from the budget. That's part of footnote seven. That's why you see that large decrease from $2.3 million to just over a half a million dollars. And then you see a list of equipment asks for that $536,000, which if you need more information, Rick won't be able to chime in here, but that's the total of that line item is that $536,000. Machinery and equipment, increase, $905,000. You recall that $800,000 in grant revenue was being accounted for, for this generator. So again, that, the real ask at the moment is $105,000 for a remote control ditch area, ditch mower for along the pond areas. That's an upper level, I'm going to say, an upper end budget protection, and it may come in lower than that. And again, using my example about contingency funds, if that number came in lower, then the balance would be basically transferred into that reserve account, you know, for potential future use. But so that wouldn't be used just to spend it, I guess. And then there's a $3.4 million grant that has been applied for. Of course, that's still in process, and so we, we don't know where that is at the moment. I think it's still a couple of months off before any, any announcements are made. But again, if that does come through, then we'll make an amendment at that point in time. So at this point in time, there is a lot of, a lot of information on this one, on this department. Questions on the sewer service disposal plant.
I have a question on the section number eight of the 905,000 machinery and equipment. That's, you said was going to be grant funded, hopefully?
The 800,000 of it, not the 105.
Okay, so the 800,000 would be funded by a grant, hopefully. If it's not funded by a grant, is it the, that 800,000 is going to be coming from other city funds? Or will it just go away altogether if we don't get the grant?
This one's included in the mitigation grant to, if we don't get that, we still need a generator. If Rick's on, he can jump on here. I guess Rick isn't on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
He said, yes, we, we need this new generator. And he's kind of sweating.
The generator, the generator that we currently have only runs about half the plant. I think it was put in in 1985. It doesn't run the other ditch. It doesn't run our presses. Like I said, when it was put in, it only ran half the plant. When I came here, the generator had been down for 10 months. Since we've got it up running, it's constantly on a maintenance issue. I believe we need a generator that would run the plant. If we had a hurricane, we'd only be able to run half the plant. We wouldn't receive those septic haulers that we could not waste from the plant at that time.
If I recall, we had an issue with that generator during the last hurricane, and we were right on the verge of having everybody's sewers back up because of that.
Yes.
So does that require engineering as well in terms of all the hookup and stuff? Would that be part of that 800,000?
Yes.
So if we don't get the grant, we don't even have the engineering for it. So what you're saying is that even if we don't get the grant, we're funding this anyway?
It's not for me to say. It's for Mark.
If, if we don't get the grant, we have to get this generator. We're going to have to pay for it.
That's what I'm saying, though, is the money that's allocated in this line item, as though we're funding it ourselves, and then the, the grant will be gravy. If we get it, great. But, you know, if there's such a, if there's such a drastic need for this, then are we budgeting this ourselves if we don't fund it through a grant?
The, the grant is funded on the revenue side. So if the grant does come through, then we'll pull the revenue out, and we'll still have the expense sitting there.
Yeah, if the grant comes through. What I'm saying, if the grant does not come through, how will we pay for this if we need it? Do we have money to pay for that?
It's going to be up to the council to say if we want to pull it out of reserves or not, like every other expense.
No, but that's my, that's my question. I mean, is this like the number one priority of needs in machinery and equipment for this department? If so, then are we relying on a grant that may or may not happen? Or are we just going to bite the bullet and, and pay for it ourselves if we don't get the grant? Do we have the money to pay for that?
In reserves, yes.
Is that the way you want to go, Dan?
Currently, the reserves through 2019, and that's not, you know, this year isn't over yet, it's projected to be just a little bit over $8 million, the water plant reserve, the water fund reserves. Which is, so it would have to come out of that, out of those reserves at that time.
See, and I don't want to do the budget with the anticipation that we're just going to keep diving into the reserves and diving into the reserves unless we absolutely have to. So, I mean, we've got to keep a mental charging amount of what we may have to take out of reserves if these grants don't fund any of this. I know that we had a lot of hardening grants and this grant and that grant. I don't know which ones take priority over others. We rely on staff to tell us that. So, you know, our categorized prioritized list of, of what needs to be paid for if we don't get the grants? That would be coming out of reserves?
800,000 or all the grants, I guess.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm saying, do we have a priority? Can we live without some of those elements in those grant applications for five years? Or do we have to have these things now? I mean, otherwise, I'm sure we wouldn't have applied for them, but let's face it, the grants were, you know, giant things that we want to do, but were they, as to the operation of the city as of tomorrow?
Well, with this particular.
I'm just trying to gauge, you know, what, what is the priority on, on equipment purchases? If we don't get the grants, what are we going to go spend money on? What's the priority?
I would, I would say we have to get, the, the generator would be one thing, because it only runs, you know, half the, the plant, the headworks from, and the bar screening needs to be replaced there. If we don't get that done, we're possibly looking at not getting water permit renewed. So I would say those are two pri, pri, primary things that we, that we need to look at doing.
So if we were to raise it to two mills, you know, we're not going to get that big of a bang for our buck. It's just going to have a, a smidge of a additional funding for these. So, and is there a way that we could have a prioritized list that way next year? We know what to spend money on if we don't get these grants?
I don't see a problem in that. I can, I can get working on that.
I mean, this, this year as well. Do you need engineering for that? You know, it just seems like we're throwing all this money out there because we have it. I want to make sure that we need to do it now and not, you know, just, you know, we don't need to buy a Bentley. I think we're good with a Chrysler, you know. Do we need all of these improvements now? So it'd be great if we had a prioritization of, of our needs so that we know what to anticipate.
Okay. Okay, next is the water sewer common services. Starts on page 68. That goes in after quite a while, too. So we'll just kind of cover some of the. Let me go over here, do notes. Is there? This is the one we're adding, we're asking to, for those three FTE CD technicians, collection and distribution, estimated salary costs of just over $100,000, and another $47,000 in benefits. That, that is, we're struggling with finding people to apply for these positions, though. So even though they're in the budget, we're trying to get, get people out there. But the budget also in this department includes increasing electricity, $15,000 for basically cost increases that have happened over several years. This town has traditionally been under budgeted, and so we're bumping that up a little bit and hoping that $130,000 would be enough for that budget. Increasing hot, operating supplies, $3,000, just for torches and bottles and, and some of those supplies. And this is another one of those, item number four, where we're putting $10,000 in for those small tools, perishable, consumable type items that we otherwise would have to find another place to put that money. So we wanted to create, basically, fund this account. The account's been out there, but it just has never been funded in the past. We were, we're asking for an increase of $50,000 to the facility for programmable logical control system, a PLC system, which runs the entire water system. It controls and monitors water pressure, water flow, the three wells, booster pumps, coordination. Basically, as Rick says, it's the, the brains of the plant, and that's a $50,000 purchase. Then you can see.
How does that, pardon me, how does that work with the SCADA system? I thought the SCADA did some of that as well.
The PLC is, is a, it's, it's like the computer you have at your desk. It runs everything. That is part of the SCADA. It's, it's a computer. It tells the pumps when to come on, when to come off. It tells you on your SCADA what your chlorine is. You're able to adjust the chlorine up and down. Now, it's locked. You can't do anything with it. You can't change the pressure. So we're set at 65 PSI. I've had a couple of people come out, look at it. It's outdated. Nobody could seem to repair it. So that's why we're looking at getting it replaced.
So you're saying that this was part of the SCADA to start out with, and you're upgrading?
Oh, I was.
Huh?
Yes, ma'am. It, it, it is part of the SCADA. It's integrated with it.
Okay. And it's locked out because we don't have that specific program added to the SCADA system?
It's, it's outdated. It's probably 20 years old software that, that they, they can't get into to change it. It's like they try to change the programs or try the settings. It's not accepting anything. So we've been running on a prayer, just trying to hope, you know, to get through this year with it so we could budget for one. But currently, you can't do anything with it. It's, you know, it's, it's like having a, you know, a 20-year-old computer right now that you can't add or do anything with.
Rick, can I ask you why this wasn't requested last year?
It didn't come up until January of this year. It's been brought to attention in the past, and, you know, we went out and, and we got some check, you know, we had some people come out, look at it, see what they could do for it. Kimberly and Horn got together and came up with a, all it needs. So that's where we stand with it right now.
So you're saying it's a thing that you monitor at your computer? Is it the same one that you can carry on your phone? That way, if someone's not at the office, they can still monitor from afar?
Yes, ma'am. It's part of that.
And does that require a license? Does that require a licensed individual to do that?
To make those changes on the.
You know, to use it, to use it, to be able to do all of the shifting around on the little mechanism itself.
To program it. In other words, the unit itself is programmed to Bell Street and Bell Street only. So you can't just like go out and buy a computer, stick in there. It has to be custom, customized to, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the waterline extension, Miss Lays account, that's staying at seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry. Which is just basically ongoing funding to extend water, water mains throughout the system. You can also see there right above there, three point three million dollars. Those are all the north and south utility, set twenty-seven extensions. They have all been completed. So those are now out of the budget. Item seven...
You say out of the budget?
Right. There, you know, there, the projects are done. I mean, there, so there's no more...
What line item was that? You're taking it out of, right?
It was the right below item number, footnote number five, and then there's a six with a zero dollars. It's a three point three six five million dollars. Those, that was for the two north utility extent, north twenty-seven extensions and then south extension, well.
Dan, I know that this isn't part of this year's budget, and forgive me for a moment, Garrett, but can we get a breakdown of exactly what it costs to do the new core lines? You know, line item per line item, like this is how much we got in grants, this is how much the city had to pay out? I don't think we've ever really gotten that number.
I try, and the, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I would just simply request that, I intend to conclude this meeting here in a few minutes at nine o'clock there, so that we can continue at the next one. But all of these questions, please, the council members need to reach out to staff for these meetings, so that we can get most of the stuff answered beforehand, and not have to do this every time. It wastes a lot of time going through there. The staff are very gracious in allowing us to meet with them beforehand. It's very respectful to be, allow this stuff out of the way before they actually meet. They have emails, they have phones. By all means, see them.
Okay. I've got that on a list. I don't, that new core thing, I'm not exact, you know... I'm just trying, I'm trying to articulate what I want to say is, some of those costs could be buried in, you know, some big, some invoice that, you know, like I'm just gonna say Ferguson. There might, you know, there might be a forty thousand dollar expense, of which twelve thousand went to New Core and twenty-eight thousand went to something, you know. I don't know how I could break that out, but I guess I'll see what Danielle has available, and maybe we can get something together. But I'm sure we certainly have a rough, and we'll try our best.
Hey, Dan, you might want to talk to Carl about that, because I know Carl's been working those two grants to pay for that. So Carl may be able to give you a breakdown of that.
Okay.
It can be done. It's just gonna take a bit of time.
Right. Anything else on page number seventy-two? I, I guess I thought if we were coming back, we might, we might circle back to that department just, you know, basically start out, whatever, page sixty-nine or whatever, or wherever that is. Just so we don't lose our, you know, the flow, I guess.
That'll be fine. So ideas for next time, obviously, if there's any cuts that need to be made to the budget for the council members, by all means, look through the rest of the budget, what we've already reviewed, and try to come up with any suggestions for cuts or additions, so that we can go ahead and cut them out at the meeting.
Garrett, we didn't make any decisions on cuts or additions or anything tonight. I mean, that would, I guess, would have been by motion. So, I mean, I don't know that the staff has a clear view of, of, of anything that they want to do or not do with what we've talked about.
I was speaking to the city council members.
Oh, I'm sorry. I only heard half of that. Sorry.
All right, well, that concludes our meeting. Mayor, Mayor, go ahead. I did some research today on, doing a reconsider on an item that I voted for at the next meeting. And my understanding is that it could not be done at a workshop. It had to be done at a meeting where I could make a motion. And I was prepared to do that tonight. And I was told by somebody to change this to a meeting instead of a budget and bring up the motion. But I think that for time's sake, I would love that they would make next meeting not a workshop, but a meeting where I could bring up a motion at that time concerning the budget.
Yes, Mr. Crowe?
Well, chances are, if we're gonna be doing trimming and changing, it would probably be at that meeting anyway.
Is Mr. Crowe on? Mr. Crowe, are you still on?
No.
No. Okay.
So at our next meeting, I'm not opposed to making an actual meeting, so that we can have a vote. Obviously, this is a workshop, but we can't do it in a meeting like this. Is anyone opposed to that?
I'm sorry, what was your comment?
Are you opposed to making our next meeting an actual meeting, so that we can have motions?
Yeah, I thought this one was.
It's, it's just a workshop.
So we can't, can we do that at this meeting? No, we can't.
We can't make official motions at a workshop.
So that's what you're doing then?
Well, I can, I have power to just do that. I'm, I'm just asking your all's opinion, if we want to make our next meeting an actual...
Sure. We have to. I think we have to.
Very good. So our next meeting will be an actual city council meeting. And I believe that coincides with our regular, regularly scheduled meeting anyway, isn't it? Okay, that would, that would be a special meeting. So whenever you're putting out for advertising, it'll be special. We'll probably want your, as well.
We're gonna have a special meeting?
Yes, ma'am, for the thirty-first.
Okay.
So those have to be given in the forward, right? Okay, is there anything else to give, city?
No.
The, none? Anything of motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The opposition, we are adjourned.